I.
Okay, we convene the county council meetings. Monday, October twenty first to continue on budget. We have. On purpose, did not advertise anything, so let's welcome this budget today. There's some department heads. If anyone wants to come forward, we'll can talk about yours. Orner, would you have anything for tonight? Okay. With Jason. Okay. Page six. Yeah, six, eight, nine.
Budget, what what do we, I mean, I.
We went through a lot of things.
We cut. Well, we need to.
Right, the main thing we need to discuss tonight is sound is.
Okay. I believe I put in for a three percent raise. For employee three. Excluding bonding or secretary. So. I need to know if I can make her a. I would department employee, if I keep her at courthouse employee, I just need to know what to do so we can. Structure.
Can we do that? Can we make a decision like that, or is there a commissioner's decision?
I don't think it's anybody's decision. I think she is a highway employee.
Boy, yes, and just that it's always been paid, I believe, at the same rate as the deputies and important. So.
Okay.
So can. Can she move to a forty hour work week? Because it does help us out. When she is there. I know it's an hour. Early in which is generally starts.
Into that. Secretary of position, right, full time.
Sure, we support outside, considering all time that they were thirty five hours a week.
I don't see where that's any different than like the soil and water board we have secretary and she's paid as a deputy, she still works there in her hours, I mean. As far as payoffs, I think it's still. On an equal level. But. She's not a courthouse employee.
Down.
So whether she works. They're still getting help, that's something I can plug.
So what time would she come in then?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, three thirty.
Okay.
We tried that this summer when we went to our. Summer hours, I'll say.
Mm hmm.
Helped us out, because. You know, we're out paving and chip stealing and. There's nobody. There to answer the phones. Mechanic is revising. So.
What you call that position?
So the secretary.
Just secretary.
Two, and so you only asked for three more, you're seven point two for next year.
Okay, I I didn't know that's what anybody.
Yeah. So. We pay her the same as the destiny in four dash, kind of seven one two percent raise. Trying to get the deputies.
Between the forty and sixty.
Go to forty thousand and point six.
Number nine.
At the top.
At the top, yeah. So, I mean, okay, with the forty or two cents, okay.
Three percent for the rest of the. Department. Because we got. Our. Our raise. Earlier this year, so. And then we thought that's what I took from when we had that conversation. For the raises this year, you know, we. Look at something every other year as far as the. The larger amount, but.
I don't have a percent for that.
I had. You're all regular.
What's that?
I think it's that.
Well, yes, we're right.
The average from those other counties is like fifty three.
Now. What did you say, the average?
Oh, it's like fifty, forty. Fifty nine, forty, but he was my highway is. No, that's fifty thousand. See, it's forty seven to fifty. The average is forty seven on the other counties and fifty thousand in Warren County, and I think we're currently fifty three.
It varies per employee.
I took the total and divided by twelve. The average, like forty seven, the one count is fifty.
And now watch you, yeah, that's was. So what?
The total was.
I know you requested different. There you go, because I thought we, I thought we did. But I thought we didn't do that.
Yes, we we.
I thought we did all laborers at one place.
We separated the posts.
Six, four, one, twenty ninety.
Yeah.
Here's. Okay.
Fifty three, four fifty.
That's, that's all. I think. Three more of the some years.
You said three percent for all others, but I thought that was labors and everybody, but that's not what I think.
Yes, that's my fantasy.
Everyone. Do you have an average of about?
I think it's the email he sent me with. And so I have, I have something to get the email about. And that. So it's what all the counties have is share. That was one. Okay, so. They're anywhere from. Forty eight, five thirty. Looks like up to. Fifty one, five thirty. Or mechanics, laborers. Three percent for the. What, a little less than fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred. So, so that.
They're all over the average already. So. Yeah. Which is fine, just don't think we need to jump on the time, although we're considering what we're doing to the other people, and you know, we gotta be fair.
Yeah. Because they got. Pretty good raise. One. And your three open ourselves, right?
Correct.
And what did they, what did they say?
If you take these.
The one, two, thirteen.
He wanted one to.
Whatever the face.
So the forty eight, five.
Yes.
There. Anyhow, mechanics there. That's why. So we call them the increase in twenty four. For twenty one and nine.
What? What did you say on longevity, though?
They weren't getting on. They took that into account.
In the camp, okay.
With their raises.
Yeah.
And I had that highlight to talk about longevity next year. That ordinance has needs to be.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Yeah. Who's including, who's not?
I think since we're trying to fetch some of the other departments up. You know, I think maybe keeping it more like a two percent rating, so I'm. Getting these guys so they're already over, and then just giving them more over, and we're just getting other people to the average.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a little unfair. It's not.
Say that again, deep end, these weekends.
I said, since there are a lot of them are already over the average, and the other departments were basically getting them to average. Maybe looking at the highway department and giving them like a two percent rate, so we're not. Getting them too far over the average, when we're just getting the other departments to the average, just trying to be a little more fair. Cross the board. But two percent, three percent, I don't hope it's that much of a difference.
Okay, that was raised, last year we reached it.
Yeah.
And he came back now, he's like, well, maybe three percent. Okay? And and I know why, because he thought maybe he had an agreement last year.
Right.
He's the same as everyone else, and we're just trying to get them at the average, they're already at the average. So she's.
We want something that we want to keep.
Yes. So this is. It's same two percent.
I agree.
And then what is, what is in the foreman? There's something in the foreman, request for twenty twenty five that hasn't been in the past. Unless one sheet.
Yeah, I don't know many.
Or her, so eleven thirty five.
Shop foreman.
Shop foreman is the one that comes up for raises and stuff.
Under eleven thirty, under Q bridge, that that's your, that's Travis, that's Travis.
This is Travis.
So we're just moving from one place to another.
We didn't move down. We moved a couple.
Right, yeah. Service, because we've been here for.
Six years.
Quite a while. And that's why this is more, and it is kind of Q bridge, we haven't moved it.
So what? I guess I just need to know what his current is, so I can see a difference.
It's.
His current?
Yeah.
Current is sixteen ninety nine, six forty seven.
So is that the right, that can't be right.
Yeah.
I don't think it's got a machine.
Yeah. For years.
Yeah, he had a big job because it went for years as a service.
He went, he worked at sixty nine.
Yeah. He's been here a while.
Six years, point seven. I can read.
So. I've had an agreement on two percent then.
Where's that?
Okay.
Well, there's different prices, I mean.
I want to know that.
So it's gonna be.
So that would move him at two there.
What do you starting is forty eight, five, thirty. And to have two percent. They're gonna go to forty nine, five hundred.
On the mechanics? I had forty nine, six.
Oh, yeah, forty eight, five thirty, yes, for the lot. New people, ones that's not in here very long. Okay. We'll go to forty nine, five. And forty eight.
I had forty nine, six.
And then the ones that are making, okay, there's one, eighty fifty two. Five thirty. We'll go to fifty three, five eighty.
And that's on the laborers?
Yes, that's all on laborers.
Okay. Then what do you got? Is that included the laborers up be up above? Where there's just two listed?
Um.
It's it's right above the supervisor and the secretary.
That would include the foreman, the bridge crew. So that would be.
Because there's two laborers that's taken out of ten, three oh six. And then you've got twelve laborers. Out of ten, three oh eight, or I'm sorry, those are both ten, three oh eight. I need to get some new glasses, I'm sorry, right?
Doing Q bridge, two employees in Q bridge. And then. Colleen will have to figure out social security and retirement deadline and on seven hours, so we have. Those then, page six. Name is. Age. Nine. Social Security and Retirement will also have to be figured on there, and then two laborers that two percent. Probably don't figure that out.
Okay.
Maintenance and repair, we have twelve laborers. Uh, part time and overtime, what was the request on that just?
Four times. Right?
Yeah.
They're running there.
Big increase.
Is that, oh, that's his name?
That's.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Right? I think he makes no.
Seven, six, uh.
Okay.
Okay.
He's third.
There isn't any overtime down for. Eleven seventy six, so.
In the budget, it shows twenty five thousand.
Eleven seventy six.
Eleven seventy six, part time.
No, it's zero down.
Twenty five thousand with twenty five thousand.
Yeah, twenty five.
We published twenty five thousand, that's what we read, the twenty twenty four budget was twenty five, twenty, it was right here.
This got great, right?
Oh, now somebody comes in. The next page, that might.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah.
No.
Oh, okay, yeah. So.
Going back to twenty.
Twenty five thousand and fifty one, nine, sixty eight.
For overtime.
For overtime.
Yes. Yeah.
That was what it was, yes, okay. No time, just. And I have any injections on those? That's in eleven seventy six, oh, five, three, one, five. Yes, part times twenty five thousand. And fifty one, uh. Fifty one, nine, sixty eight for overtime. And I assume there was time. There's snow.
We know. How much?
Yeah.
We paid in overtime so far this year? We, no, I don't want to be. Fine.
Yeah.
Some.
Some, a lot, a lot of the, a lot of them take the the time. So.
A lot of, yeah, because if you pay them, you have to pay time, and I thought, yeah. A lot of.
Travis end up with top seven.
Um, these. The news, we were talking about the foreman, there's a foreman in eleven thirty five, which is Travis. And it's in, there's another foreman position that we don't have.
Oh.
That's in eleven seventy six.
The foreman's in the.
You don't have a shop.
No, we have the shop foreman, but it's in. Ten, two oh seven.
This foreman is in, okay, I pay for five thirty one. This is a change that Kim and I just talked about, and at eleven thirty five, we were paying Travis and a laborer on the same line item. We wanted that separated because of the different titles.
Okay.
And we made two line items out of.
Okay.
That's fine, okay.
Okay.
I think that's part of the.
That's what.
Where we.
So.
Like we left them zero to paying some.
Yeah. Okay, so can we go back to page six really quick? Under Cumber, Cumber. Cumber Bridge. Foreman. And Bridge Crew.
Right.
You. Said numbers, but. I did not write it down. For some reason.
If you said it was true, that would have to be figured out.
Yeah, one bridge, one.
Five, it's twenty percent.
Yeah, it's like two percent for what they're souring. I don't think what's on here is correct, as.
No, for the foreman's amount, that's.
Yeah, that's the old amount.
For the race.
Got it. And then on page nine, did we make, what changes did we make there? I've got. The highway secretary. The laborers. Did we do them?
In. Um, I thought only two percent on.
So.
There's a range of what they make.
Because it's a range, yeah.
Okay.
Two percent raise.
You can't define it, yeah.
Forty nine, something with fifty. And only trying to give these figures. These.
What about superintendent?
No, we haven't talked about, no.
Right. That's very personal.
Yeah, and then we've got the shop foreman and the mechanics.
And. Two percent on those.
Okay.
Right? Yes. Okay.
I just want to make sure that we were all in agreement.
And then. Retirement and.
She'll get that figured.
She'll have to hear that, which is all.
Okay.
That is. They never got the except. Chase.
The supervisor's kind of in the same boat, it's, I mean, he paid a little higher than the averages, but I guess some getting raised, so.
Yeah.
People in line to. Or the others, so I'm.
And.
It's a two percent.
Eighty three, three oh two.
Mm hmm. I can do it again to make sure that's right.
Eighty three, three oh two.
Okay.
Oh, two. Eighty three, three oh two.
No questions, Carol?
You don't get to the good stuff.
That's all.
We're boring.
Yeah, we're getting boring tonight.
Okay.
So now that that covers all highway.
I believe so.
So.
Okay, can can I just be? Ask you a couple of questions about what we have cut from. The rest of the budget to get down to the, we had to cut like four hundred and sixty thousand. I believe. I know we cut like.
Just two percent.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand out of the matching.
Correct. Right, so we're really not gonna know until she gets all the numbers in here, and then we can see, because there we did the reduction.
Yes.
So we'll see. Where we stand, I know.
I have a question on the highway, what did we decide on? The greater? For next year?
The greater?
He had put in. To purchase a new, to replace a greater, right?
Yes.
Page fifty five, I think, news.
Overall, page nine. He's running. And the grinders.
In the highway department, we have it under fifty five, page fifty five. Which are being county highway restricted.
Five eighty one?
No, or.
There, because I had it written down.
The equipment is in forty four, one oh one.
Greater.
The great, that's work.
Yes, the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and eighty five.
And he left it at eighty five this year, and that was for a greater, and did that get left in?
Yes.
That is left in, okay.
That I probably discussed.
Okay.
Two minutes ago.
Okay.
I didn't. Mark anything online, and I just thought it was thirty five.
I just marked that it was for a greater.
I'm trying to get all those instances.
Yeah, I, I just, I was thinking I saw something that that was taken out, and that's why I was worried. So, yeah, I just want to make sure you were aware.
We'll have to wait, oh, Colleen puts all these numbers in, Jason, I don't know, I have. Q bridge, we should be fine.
Yeah.
Um, I have a show in, I don't know, roads and streets, combined, it's just the MVA, which I can name which. I had, what I did wrong, thank you, because what? What we started beginning of the year, what we budgeted, what's on the budget request for next year, I showed you, you can cut about forty seventy five thousand. But we did a reduction, so. And then we've added to raises, so we'll just have to wait for it, and we might have to cut. Somewhere in there next month, you know, we'll use the final, that's it, so we won't be able to know until she gets those numbers in. I think.
We did that, we also did, redos those.
That.
Which is.
Right, so then you took.
Something. From MVA, it's a local resource reach.
We dropped that.
They are pretty healthy, right?
Yeah, so both for day. Do right now, and then, um. New bridge, I mean, yeah. Or the maximum level. You should be here, yeah.
Okay.
Wait, I know what, I know.
You got a. And what I gave out was. Everything that we need to discuss is highlighted in yellow, okay, that we absolutely have to discuss tonight for. Colleen to get in, then anything else is open, then anybody has questions, but we've discussed mostly everything that's not highlighted. Written down last, for years.
Colleen, I think it was on this, I can't find it on my sheet, but under eleven seventy six, other repairs and maintenance, it's eleven seventy six, thirty twenty six over. And in twenty twenty four, it was two ten. I'm on page fifty nine in our budget notes, right? I got two hundred and ten thousand. See, I think we dropped that to two hundred and ten, my question to Jason was, I think the reason he increased it to two fifty was because. That was gonna pay the preventative maintenance on the new grader and stuff.
Well, on.
So.
The other.
And other.
Other graders, yes, other.
But if we're giving them money to buy the new grader, two eighty five, but we're not allowing them to have the preventative maintenance, and we cut that by forty thousand, that was my question.
And we didn't have it, right?
We did, we did.
I think that's a problem, you guys have a new grader, you gotta have that program to go with it.
That program can be paid. That program can be paid.
You had it written down another way.
Yeah, that program can be paid.
You can pay it out as something else.
Yes, we don't necessarily, I mean. The forty thousand. Would be. Helpful, but we can. We can take that somewhere else.
Okay, okay. I was just worried if we're letting buy the grader, so we took out what he needs to go with it.
And, and. Just remember, we're getting rid of it. Um, two, three, four leases next year, four leases will drop off next year.
Okay.
Cut it home in twenty six.
Okay.
Uh, yes. We have the two graders, I hope we only have twenty six. Yes, yes.
Yeah. And that'll just leave a hundred plus thousand per year until, it's a twenty six.
Twenty six.
Okay.
And then plus our enterprise.
Yeah.
If you keep it back, yeah.
Thank you.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Great, good call, no.
It's, it's been broken down yearly, so it's not. As big of a be.
As long as you're.
Yes.
You know how you think about it.
We can figure it out.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, where do you want to go next?
Five percent of the yellow highlights.
Just across the board.
Thirty minutes for every five percent.
Well, that's.
Ten more hours.
You're up, I guess, okay.
Same.
Andrew walked out, so he lost his boat, so. Good night, babe. Training officer, I thought we discussed that here.
We did, we, we left.
We did the thirteen hundred is what we. Okay, sorry, everybody was okay with that.
Yeah, secretary, I think you went back to. Whatever. Yeah, yeah, yes. And then director, assistant director, I think you dropped it back to five percent, instead of the eight percent. I think that's what we left before we stopped on this.
Well, I just. Yeah. It's five percent. The figures here represent that, yeah. Uh, I don't know, is that particularly you put on there, I don't miss that. I. Correct me if I'm wrong, I, I've been told that. Do you want to leave it? And why can't we have a writing down C? Increase our time.
Yes.
Leave it.
We've got this.
Seven, we have on there, three hundred and seventy six for the E M T. A two hundred and twenty five thousand. E M T B, six hundred and forty two thousand for the paramedics. And sixty seven fifty seven for the fleet management officer.
Yeah.
Okay. And then. But you wanna increase the pay for part time to put more incentive to get them to.
Yes.
Help out that.
So what we're looking at right now, a full time. E M T makes twenty two dollars an hour. Advanced E M T makes twenty six, and a paramedic full time makes thirty one. So I think I put in on their advanced, basic E M Ts nineteen, which was a dollar raise from this year. Advanced E M T was a dollar, and so was the paramedic. That's what I originally proposed, but. Where we're at now, I think we. Really need to look at that seriously, increase it more to. Um. You know. Give a little bit of incentive to them to pick up those hours.
The part time.
Yes.
And where that.
Where's it listed at? I don't even see part time on.
Well, it's on my this sheet here, but I don't know that it ever makes it. On your sheet, but on my sheet, I always put it on this sheet on there. It's listed right down here. I put it on there every year. And whatever reason, it doesn't make it to your sheets.
Because it comes on vacation.
The vacation six ninety thousand.
Yes.
That's vacation and six sixteen thousand.
Right, but I put on there, I give you the hourly rate, tell you what their hourly rate is.
Right.
So it makes it to the salary, it's, yes.
So you're paying the. Part time out of vacation and sick?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we just need to, um, salary ordinance, but. What there are.
Which I think it does make it to the salary ordinance. I believe, doesn't, I thought it did, didn't it, Colleen? I can't remember if it did or not.
Well, I kinda have a problem with it being in there because. If you, if you raise it, we can't raise that, so it's gonna take away from vacation sick. We can't increase the budget, it's been advertised.
Well.
So what if he needs extra?
Well, it's our. County general sees all one. The overall, if we are still. About gonna have dinner.
Okay.
Right now, propose is nine million, six hundred and eighty thousand.
Perfect, I thought.
She advertises nine million, nine hundred thousand, so. We have some.
Patty.
Is that what you mean now?
Yes, okay.
But it, I mean.
Want a pad. For next year, no, we always want a pad once advertised.
So, right, currently it's fifteen thousand less, so really, we don't wanna take that less.
Of what this year's is?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I put a hundred and five in and I pushed it down to ninety.
I still think it needs to be a separate line item so we can keep track. I think it does.
I think, yes.
This, yeah, this pay is just gonna mess, it's gotta be. We are, so people can understand it.
Two separate line owners.
Yeah.
And you should have a line item for part time.
Yes.
It's, it's just better accounting.
Okay, then that is, we're gonna have to do a make your own hall of the overtime then. And then their base salary, because the way it is now is if they take. If they're working two days and they take a day off, they get paid forty eight hours straight time. And that comes right out of their. Base salary. So you're gonna have to go in and. You're gonna have to revamp all that if you're gonna do that, if you're gonna wanna track their vacation sick.
Well, for, it's gonna have to be done for accounting, for accounting purposes, it's gotta be separate.
Then, then we're gonna have to go in and. And we're gonna have to look at everybody's time and make a projection. Because not everybody takes their full amount of time off. Either.
I'd like to.
I don't think it's broke out on there.
It's not broke out.
Yeah.
The base says on there is, is their ba- the base pay, how many hours they get a base pay? So if they take a vacation, it says forty eight hours at. Whatever, and it gives a gross amount, so it'll be forty eight times thirty one. It gives a gross amount. Then it shows her overtime. How many hours in overtime? In that pay, two week pay period.
Publics, publicly other employees in the court app, when they use their vacation day, it is still say forty hours. On there, instead of thirty two hours, work and eight hours vacation.
That's why we, that's why we track it on a crew sheet.
Each department, each department keeps track of.
Right.
So how do you keep track of theirs?
Uh, record for each employee that I fill out every single time.
So every two weeks, I turn in a, a crew sheet of each employee. You know, how many days they have sick time, how many days personal time, how many vacation time, I give it to him. And they humor, yeah, and both of her make, and I make sure we match.
Okay, so.
That's been in that way for twenty five years.
Sounds like it's time to change.
Yeah, we need a different system, holy moly.
That's a lot of, for a lot of.
Mm hmm.
Think you're gonna add more work.
Yeah.
In my department, I just think. The payroll system should be capable of putting in regular hours and. So it breaks it down on a pace of.
So. Okay, let me. Let's get by, got this right, so. Just for favors. And. The employee makes sixty thousand dollars a year.
Mm hmm.
And. They use vacation days, sick days. That's still just part of the sixty thousand dollars per year. But if they work overtime, it comes out of the overtime.
Mm hmm.
So you're not really using vacation and sick.
Or the full time, it's paying the part time.
It actually should be named.
Or part time.
You can change the name of it, yeah, you could change the name of it, yeah.
Vacation and sick.
Yeah. You could change it to part time. Yes. If that would make it better clarification.
Body vacation.
Not anymore, we used to.
Okay.
In the old system, when we paid that modified halftime, we paid it out of vacation sick. But we don't do that anymore.
So. Getting back to the figure, ninety thousand. Will that be enough?
Well, I mean, you look at. If the period, the person's taking off vacation, I mean, it's gonna be their straight time, there's gonna be. In theory, you hope there's gonna be a little extra left in the overtime that we can. Move it down in there into that line item, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, and we're gonna.
Cause if you look in theory of. If you look at.
Then. We can just transfer money. From. Overtime to part time if. We can get more people part time to work, it takes some of those overtime hours.
Hours.
Then we don't have to pay overtime.
Right.
But we need, I need. We need to change.
Design.
Part time, if we want our salary ordinance. Um, E M. So you have a part time E M T A, the M T Bs and paramedics, so give me what the annually rate of.
Right now, I have full time rate. E M T basics make twenty two dollars an hour.
What are you wanting to pay the part time people for E M T A?
I think we gotta do at least a minimum of twenty one.
Okay, and then E M T B.
Uh, wait, go back to the M T A, if you're doing M T A first, that should be twenty five. Sorry, I thought you said M T D. Twenty five. E M T Bs twenty one.
That's what they are now, or that's what you wanna?
That's where I want them to be.
What are they now?
Uh, E M T Bs, I think, are eighteen right now.
For pa- for part time?
Yes.
What's in hay at now?
I think they're at twenty one. They're at twenty four right now, and I'd like to go to thirty with them.
I'm hearing you have twenty one dollars. Paramedics at thirty one now?
That's the full time.
That's full time, yeah.
What do you, sorry.
Thirty.
And they're currently at?
Twenty four.
Okay.
And you can't get people.
Today's.
To do it part time, right?
We are starting to get more people in, um. Uh, I think that with the increase, it'll help a lot. Uh, but we are starting to get more and more, as I said last week, more and more applying. We're also getting some out of our E M T classes too, which is helping.
Well, and, and I think. If that. That's down on the overtime. I'm, I'm okay with the increase.
Okay, so let's recap.
Yes.
A B, a B, you want it to be.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, and it's currently nineteen, correct?
Or eighteen.
Eighteen, so we want twenty one, eighteen, and then it's twenty five for A, currently at twenty one. And then a parrot, you want thirty currently at twenty four.
Yeah.
So we gave them a big raise already this year, and you're wanting a twenty four percent.
Not, not part time. Just the M T Bs.
Well, this is only for part.
Yeah.
This is to get. More part time than both people to work on this overtime, you need to cut down our overtime.
In theory, that's, that's the way.
Fingers crossed, and it all works.
Says it, or then I think Aaron said, you know, let's try it for a couple of months, and see. And then. Might have to reset.
Twenty five, twenty one.
Twenty five, twenty one and thirty. So is everybody okay with that, Sam? Cause I don't know when the last time, if we gave a part time.
Right.
Okay.
And then we were leaving them full time alone, because of the, where we was on.
Yeah.
What do you think? So, uh, Garth. When the checks come out, do you use, does that employee? Get all of his regular check? And his overtime check, all of one, one something, so therefore all of his deductions. Coming out with those categories.
Yeah.
But yeah. On vacation sick. We wanna change that to. Part time.
The vacation sick line item, you guys wanna change it to part time.
That's in there too.
That's what, no.
It always was, it just was.
Yes.
I was basically taking part time when I was paying my part time out of vacation sick.
Vacation and sick is built into their salaries, like.
All right, that's a nightmare, I think.
Yeah, yes.
Anyway, I wanted to go back to where the proposed budget, at the end, what you said is gonna change, I hear this nine million, six hundred and eighty thousand. You said probably you're having things down.
It's advertised at nine, no one's.
Yeah. All, all these changes we're making today, this is based on what's on here now.
Yeah.
She's gotta put all these changes in, and we'll have to look at it, but we can't go over nine million, nine hundred and. That's what we advertised, so we might have to move. Which. Already knew, like, share of salary and, um. Something else, outlet, public safety and county general, so.
Totally, right.
Next Monday, we may have to do some. Shifting that we wanna have. Basically, everything, you know, so Colleen. So if everybody okay with the top part, then it's by all in the beginning. Okay, so then.
Well, wait a minute.
Okay.
Do with the director and.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we moved it back to five, but I don't remember the numbers.
That's what, probably you had that. I highlighted that she did we. Decided five percent of it.
So it looks like it's in your, your big, uh.
And so she's got the right amount in there.
We originally asked for eight, but I think you guys last week moved it back to five.
So, may I kind of, any questions on the top?
No.
Oh, Jeff, and then who? I highlighted.
I don't want you to repeat everything.
I missed, okay, okay, so.
Funny thing about listening too, like, it picks up. Small dog.
Uh huh.
And I caught Denise and mom. And, uh.
So.
Don't even say my name.
I did, I just did. They were talking under their breath about. That they would hurry up.
That is what we said, yeah.
Did.
You got the big house?
No.
You just said, I wish he'd hurry up.
He's making stuff.
Had the journey over there, then he then kept that.
So, just, I wanted, I read some numbers and just kind of. I know that the, the, the big issue in hand is our overtime. And so I went, our overtime, where our, our, where our money's at. So I went back and I looked at twenty twenty three's. Overtime hours. Okay, and compared it to twenty twenty four. And I'll be, we are. Very close, if we're not, they worked as many overtime hours in twenty twenty three as what they did in twenty twenty four. The difference is, is how we were paying them.
That's right.
We understand.
Right, and so, and I, and I, so I, I just wanted to understand that. There wasn't any more overtime, it's the same amount overtime.
And it's just they weren't.
And the one guy that was in question, I ran him out on eighteen pays. There was five hour difference between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So he's working this as many hours, so there's no, I just wanted. Clarify that, make sure that that's understanding.
February up to late August, September, we have five hundred forty thousand dollar income. You talked about that. And that was alarming, I think that really jumped out everybody. In that period of time, how much overtime would be picked up?
The same as what?
It's the same as twenty three.
Yeah, same amount. It's just we changed one time and a half versus the halftime. And that's where it's at. So.
Speaking, uh, speaking of overtime, is there? Is there an issue with people not? I guess I'm just gonna elephant in the room. Is there an issue with people showing up late or not showing up at all? And other people have to work the part time hours, that's creating a situation, is that's, that's what I've been told. And so.
So you're saying that people are not?
What do you do if someone doesn't have any vacation days left, and they say they're not coming in?
Come in late.
But someone has to cover them.
Typically, part time people cover them.
Or someone else, I mean, they get paid overtime.
Do what now?
If it's a full time, of course, that's cover, I mean, you get overtime.
Correct, if they're covering, but typically they don't cover.
I thought you said part time people have been getting the work out of.
They do, there's more, there's, I'm getting more people on the roster to work, and therefore they're picking it up. Yes.
So if we have people who aren't getting paid because they don't have any vacation, then they should have. There should be some money left in that salary line item.
Yes, correct, and there there should be, right. Which there will be, as I ran the numbers out, there's a, there's a good amount of money left in the paramedic line item. Which we're gonna have to move some of that around. Uh, to cover, you know, other areas within that budget for this year. The the sou- I ran the, I I ran the numbers out on the overtime. We're 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 close, but I think there's enough there to cover to the end of the year, but there is gonna be. A portion left in the in the paramedic that we can move down into other line items to to make sure.
So are we completely in full now, where all spots have been taken?
They are.
Okay, good. And then, part timers, is there a set amount of people that you want?
I mean, not really, I mean, it's, it went back to the question, which I think, uh, you know. Charlie answered that question is, is, you know. Depending on how many people we have on a roster, you know, within employees, what does that do to our? You know, insurance premium cover, and he answered, there's really doesn't change a thing, so honestly. I have as many people I want then. Which will help.
Yeah, yeah. I think this will help. Hopefully, you know, fingers crossed.
I wanna make sure if someone's, you know, on vacation, sick, or just not working, you do everything you can to cover them with part time.
We do, and that's sweet.
Another full time, it's just gonna get more, I mean, I know they're getting overtime already, but I don't, I'm getting more than that.
I'll reassure you, we started in July, Jeff started doing that in July office. To make sure that the full, the part time get it first. And then if they can't do it, then we have to resort, sometimes we do, it's either Jeff or I. Or it's a full time employee, because we go back to the same thing I've said before. If I don't put anybody in the seat. Now what we wanna do? So, and I don't know, I guess. You were communicated, what was communicated to you, that there was people full time or filling in for people that didn't wanna work?
No, just.
Just if. They can't.
Can, yeah, if they, if they're, you know, they show up late or for whatever reason, we have to have people that covers those those hours. And I just wanna make sure that.
Who's showing up late, you mean a full time employee showing up late, oversleeping, or what?
I have no idea.
Oh.
When you gave us your our your reports throughout the past three or four months, you say, well, these are their scheduled overtime.
Right, okay.
So that doesn't really count, because we have to pay them. But then this is their extra overtime, why are they getting that extra?
Okay, I see what you're saying, so a lot of that, right, so.
Saying, that's what we.
Okay, yes, alright, I understand now what you're saying. Right.
Hold them accountable.
Number one, they have been, there is good disciplinary actions done, and people are late, so I will say that, the second thing is, is. Um, if a full time employee takes off and a part time employee is not available, then we try to fill it, we have to fill it with somebody. The other issue we ran into in hand was the vacant sp- the vacant positions that we had when we first start out first the year. Then we pulled in the twelve hour truck, in hopes that. We would have individuals that would pick up the twelve hour. Didn't pick up as well as what we wanted it to at the time that started. But it has filled in now, so therefore those spots were vacant, so therefore. The part time that wasn't available, and the full time was picking that up, so yeah, okay, that's fine.
So in a department that, you know, obviously there's gonna be overtime, but then we have the special overtime, that's what I call it, special overtime.
The special overtime would be the one that above and beyond their schedule.
Scheduled overtime, yes, that's what I call it, I call it special overtime, so. You know, our job here is to, everything runs like a business transaction, so we have to ensure that. We cut that, or make that special overtime as little as possible.
Right.
So whatever it takes to make that little as possible, that's what we would like to do.
And I would love that myself, yeah, because it it, you know, I'd love to have that. It just, you know, we, the the challenge we run into is, is, you know, that part time employee is not available. We have to fill that seat somehow.
Right.
Or we have to shut a truck down.
Exactly.
And I, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable, I mean, I, to me. Shoving that first, that one person over onto a truck. To me, you're, you're overpaying that truck, basically. You know, and we're not providing the service to our people in our community, like we should, so that's why we have, we're, we do what we have to do to fill that in and. It's not that.
We'll just have to monitor it.
And that's the plan is, is I wanna, I like to ride it out for three or four months, and if it don't work, then let's come back to the table and. Look at what we have to do.
Right.
You know, hire more people, or whatever that is. Because I'm looking at the numbers, the last two pays, we have come down. A little, we've come down a little bit on our overtime going out, because we have all the spots filled.
Did you get a contract today on the ALS?
I did get the one contract, uh, I went through it, uh, there was some things that needed to be added, so I sent it back. Uh, I have not seen them yet, uh, I'm hoping first thing I'll see them in the morning, once I see them. I will immediately send those to you guys for review.
You might send it to the commissioners too.
Yeah, that's the plan, and Colleen and the attorneys. Um, yes, there were some things that we got, I got the first one was EMS plus. There were some things that were missing in it, so I sent it back to him, I said he needed to include those. So, uh, I did not see it before I came in, so I'm hoping for saying in the morning. And I'll get them out soon.
Yeah, that that's a big concern. Is making a decision on that. For the first year, we're gonna have two commissioners, but we're high in their hands. If we make a decision. And I I noticed that Eric voted no this morning, I watched it.
I think he voted no because it didn't have a contract, he wanted to see the contract, and he wanted to, his thought was, he wanted to know. Can we buy it outright cheaper than buying it on contract?
Right, I think his biggest concern, whenever you have a middleman, you're always paying.
I'm not sure where he's talking middleman, I don't know where that's coming from, who's, who's he talking when he says middleman? I mean, we're buying a Stricker from Stryker. It's not coming, there's no third party person in it. Right, yeah, I mean, it's directly. Which I, I mean, and I'm not, I mean, I. Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of it is, is what it create, what you're creating is you're locking in on one price. You're not subjected to one to price increases a year.
The benefit for them is they know they got those customers ten years.
Right.
Instead of the three years, I'm gonna price this from this place, and this from this place, and not buy from them at the time, so that's their.
And they're, they're, they've got, said they're making money, there there's not, they're not losing money, they're making their money, and it's, you know. The one thing you have to keep in mind too is, is if you elect to go straight purchase, which that can be the option. Is every year that you buy equipment, you have to buy a new service contract. Pro care contract for every year, you cannot combine, so like, the the two, I'm, the the what I put in, the. The two oh five I put in, that covers that equipment. I come back to you in twenty twenty six for another set of equipment, you have to buy another pro care plan for it. The next year, you gotta do it, so when you're all done, you're gonna have six different. Preventive maintenance programs, whereas this program, it's all one.
Are you looking at the seven or ten year?
I'm gonna tell you honestly, the ten year would be the way to go, but I.
Guess that would be my.
I'm, I'm tickled pieces, we get the seven year plan. Because you're still getting the same amount of equipment over seven years. They come in the four year, at the four year period, they look at your equipment. You know, they they do a visual inspection, they will replace it, at the end of seven years, if you like to get out, it's a dollar buyout. It's yours to keep. And you still have another three to five years, because they've done all that good maintenance through that, you still have that. FDA says eight years is the lifespan, but if you're doing good preventive maintenance on it, you could get out to ten to twelve years on it. You know, now, the ALS three sixty program. You buy, you get all new first year, at the five year mark, you you either opt back in, or you can opt out. If you opt back in, you get brand new, all brand new equipment right then there. Either the same type, or the new in it, if they have something new, you get the new. You have that for five years, at the end of ten year mark, you can either opt in or opt out. If you opt out, you do the fair market price, which will not exceed two hundred twenty five thousand dollars.
So who, do you know who? Appraises that equipment for fair market price?
They probably do.
Do we have a total on the ten year?
It'll be two, it's two hundred. They projected it was two hundred forty five thousand for ten years. So what, two point four million dollars, I think, or. And but in that, you're also including your maintenance program, your, you know, you trade ins, you're, you're including all that in there.
Overall, you said two point.
Two point four million, I think. Three hundred forty, three hundred forty five thousand dollars a year for ten years. It is not, what I put in there was just a straight line purchase.
So, up there, there's a maintenance, if if we went up to one hundred and forty five thousand, what comes out of here? Um, twenty five hundred for repairs and maintenance?
Uh, what, if he went with the whole program?
Yes.
Uh, the the cop maintenance for forty five hundred. And the repair maintenance three three six oh one for sixteen five. And that would be it.
I know you come this far, but I forgot, you put it in. The line forty four one oh one. That is computers.
Yeah, seventy five hundred is computers.
On what?
Under, under the four hundreds, under capital outlays.
The equipment?
Yes.
Yes, basically.
Two hundred twenty three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, seventy five hundred is equipment, the rest of it was monitors, none.
Yeah, so the seventy five hundred dollars is two, is three new desktops. And the rest of that amount was originally two monitors, two monitor mounts. I originally put three cops, but I changed that. So what I wanna change it to? Two monitors. Two cops. One power load. And then, maintenance, preventive maintenance on the three present. Power loads that we have, which will come up to, I think it's two hundred and five thousand four hundred dollars, or something like that.
Okay, so we go with the ALS, we basically can cut out sixteen five, forty five fifty, but we're gonna have to add. Um, thirty thousand to give the equipment line item, correct?
Yeah, but if you go the MS plus, the MS plus one, which is the seven year program, is two hundred thousand. Turn one thousand, two hundred thousand dollars.
So we could cut that.
You could cut the those two out, and now you could.
And then so cut that.
So if we leave it like it is, we've kinda got it covered either way.
I wish that.
Yes.
We can wait till January one and let new commissioners sign that contract. This is actually next year's money anyway.
You did, well, the problem is, this will change, because I have until November, October thirty first.
They won't have the money.
No, but if I sign the contract before then, I can lock the price, if I don't, then I have to take a four percent increase. So that'll change that number.
I think as far as next year goes. Close to a wash, I mean, we gotta account for either the purchases of the equipment, or the first year, the differences for like for ten years, but doing. But. Yeah, we'll just have to mess with it, when whatever's decided, I guess, yeah.
It just, that's, and e- and even if we don't do any of the three, it's a four percent raise on all three of them. Even on the ALS three sixty, the MS plus, or if we do what we call a straight purchase. We purchase it outright. It's gonna be a four percent raise, a four percent price increase.
Highlighted the twenty five hundred repairs, that's okay, that's what we need.
The residual on this is one dollar.
In the radio repairs, equipment repairs, twenty five thousand.
The equipment repairs, three three six five zero, the twenty five thousand, yes, that's for the ambulance.
Okay, so six oh one. Can be cut if we go with.
So let me ask you this again, because I asked you this this morning, the residual buyout on the ten year, do we know what that would be?
Not to exceed two twenty five, we don't know the exact number, but it will not exceed two hundred twenty five thousand.
Okay, so on the.
At ten year mark.
On the seven year. Buyout, residual buyout, is that a do- was that a dollar?
One dollar. And the reason is, if you.
You don't get new equipment in the seven year unless they think it's necessary, correct?
We would look at that and decide if we wanted to replace at the time, or do we hold on? Or do we go into a, our own rotation program ourselves? You know.
They may have, they may have a great program at that time, where we buy time by doing a seven year.
You can make an option either way, you can say, okay, the seven year mark, we didn't like this, we're gonna now do it our own.
Okay, so.
We could go back to that.
If the payment on the ALS three sixty is two forty five, that's two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the two hundred, up to a two hundred twenty five thousand on a residual buyout. If you do a seven year program at two hundred and eight thou- two hundred thousand eight hundred dollars over a seven year period, that's one million four hundred five thousand dollars worth of residual equipment buyout. Of a dollar. So that's a million dollars difference.
But you also gotta keep in mind, you're, you're on the ten year plan, you're getting two sets of equipment. You got the first year, first one in the five year, you get new ones. So you're getting two, yeah, you're only getting one set on the seven year, the ten year, you're getting two sets.
But at year four, on the seven year program.
They just still got a visual, so if there, if if there's nothing wrong, they weren't changing things.
And it's their decision.
I- i- it's kind of all, both of our decisions, I mean, if we look at a mattress and a mattress is torn, they're on the cock, they're gonna replace it. The one other good thing in this, with this, is if you do the preventive maintenance program, they come in, they work on it, they, you know. Replace, you know, parts, all that, and they replace the batteries, free charge. Batteries right now, as I told them this morning, the batteries on my Lucas devices, three of them was sixteen hundred dollars. And the top batteries were around thirteen hundred dollars for four of them. And I usually do an athlete's once or twice a year. That'd be a question I can ask him tomorrow, I'll find out on that, I, we've never really.
You'll have to make a decision.
No, I I know, I just, I think, and also, I wouldn't till you guys see the contracts. Okay, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I think that's fair, that you gotta see it first, you guys may see the contract and don't like it.
Right, I mean.
Only thing I would ask is. As long as we can have a decision by the thirty first.
Right.
So either we sign those contracts, or I can sign the purchase agreement. A purchase agreement for the straight purchase, so that we can lock that price.
They did it, did they do a contingency this morning?
Like in the contract, so they.
So the, so the difference is, if we do a straight purchase, I can. So the difference is if we do a straight purchase, I can sign the purchase order to lock it. But if we're gonna do the other programs, that's a contract, therefore, that will, I mean, honestly, the. Commissioner, like it's signed it, but it needs to be, you know, looked by the attorney. Cause it's a, it's basically at least own programs, what it is, you're leasing the stuff, and then you opt, you at the whatever seven year, ten year mark. You decide which way you're gonna go. Just like by a car.
But we have more information, so that's good.
But we have to. We have to budget it by next month.
I would hope.
Budget wise, it's not a big deal, but then. He signs a contract, then commissioners are going to be. In it for ten years or seven years, whatever. They're not happy with. And I don't know what penalties are.
Well, there'll be something in that contract, there'll be a buyout, you bet.
So we'll just have to fill that out once.
If I have the first thing in the morning, I will definitely have them sent out to you guys, so you guys can review and look at them, and I'll, I'll get them to everybody else that needs to go to.
So maybe, Colleen, the. Uh, thirty twenty six hundred is okay, six oh one, six thirty is contingent, and six fifty is okay. And the one oh forty four one oh one is contingent on.
Definitely need to do the three desktop computers.
Gonna have to have. Money in there for equipment.
Either way you go, yes.
There's gotta be at least.
What about the, I think that was it.
I didn't have anything else, I, I, you had any other questions on the other line items, the only one. I don't know, under the three hundreds, just make sure, the latex scheduler program.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, that's the fifty, you change that to fifty one, okay, okay.
Service contract is involved in that ten year.
Yeah, both of them.
In there.
Yes.
You don't have to mess with it.
And it'll be for all the equipment, it's one service agreement for all the stuff. Just like I said, if you do straight purchases, which we've set up a, a four year, a five year plan of replacing so much every year. Just remember, you'll have to get a service contract every year, a new one, for that equipment.
What's the fleet management officer that you've got?
Basically, he is in charge of uh, doing the maintenance on my ambulances, so he changes the oil. Uh, changes the brakes, does all of the preventative maintenance on that.
Is that a separate individual or something?
Well, it's, he's basically one of my employees that does it on his, you know.
It was sixty one forty three this year.
The only thing I would ask, I don't know, Colleen, I keep forgetting, ask you, can we change that to where that's a biweekly pay instead of a monthly? Was it was coming, he gets, he gets a monthly, when we change that to a biweekly? Where he gets it every. Ensure is that company that we utilize to help uh, when we can't with billing?
I was just looking, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to the sleep management. That's over a five percent increase for that person.
I gave him a ten percent. The reason I did that is, is just because of the responsibilities he has, and it's not. He, he does a lot for me in making sure, I mean, he changes door latches, you know. He try to shoots, if it's something we can't fix, then we always, so we, we send it out, but if it's above them, beyond what we can't do.
I don't feel comfortable giving them a ten percent increase, I, I know that there's a lot of responsibility there, but. It's a, it's less than what we would have to send those ambulances off to get maintenance.
That's why I did. But. Now, well, you guys make that decision, but that's why I did the ten percent.
I mean, you guys, if you guys agree to give him ten, that's.
The others, the, myself, the director, assistant director, all that was five percent.
I think that's more fair.
I just wanna thank Darth and Jeff for all your time and energy and effort that you put into all this, you put a lot of extra hours in. Yeah, that's up to date, turned it upside sideways, downside. Tried to. I don't know if you have, you guys have any other plans on anything on the line, line item thing? The only thing I will say. You write, and I'll, I'll. Tell you, I'll, on this, if you go to the medical record. I did give him a ten percent raise. On dates of three, it's thirty, it's under the three thousands for professional service. Uh, three, 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 zero, three, 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 zero.
Oh, I see it.
And I thought we talked about that one.
And the reason I did that is, is we're getting off pretty easy with the medical director, medical directors are between eight and ten thousand dollars.
They have to sign off on your paperwork.
Paperwork, he has to, yeah.
Is that some, is that someone? Is that someone that is currently in a plea, or is that someone that we're contracting with?
It's basic contracting, it's Dr. Tricochi, he lives down in Susan Henderson's old house, down on West Liberty Church Road. He's a affiliate with Saint Vincent's. Which Saint, Saint Vincent's are supervising the hospital.
You're getting ten percent because those situations. That's exactly what you did.
There, there's a lot of responsibilities, if we don't have him, we don't have, basically.
Well, there's a lot of legal, of legal responsibility, so a ten percent for him is a.
When you see that, I wanted you to understand that's what that was. Okay, that's.
Yeah, we talked, yeah, we definitely talked about that.
Good?
Yep.
I'll get those contracted to you soon as I can.
Okay, that sounds good, thanks, Darth. We're ready to dispatch.
Who's on first?
Who's on first, I love it.
And I still don't.
Okay, so we're doing our.
Right, but we still have money in us, right?
Right.
So we think request money. Out of that fund like we've had every year.
Yeah, my answer to doing that is we want, there was concern of keeping some in those funds to pay for our server and things.
And what I don't understand, trouble is if you start a year with eighty nine. And we always receive every year, this is thousand, fifty one dollars, but you, how did we spend twenty five thousand?
So we get and receive that this year. For twelve oh six.
We had to split that out, I think.
Cause I couldn't figure out why this, how, how do we get by?
While we were looking at the highway or something, no.
I guess all the.
But we have, I showed seventy nine thousand in there. I don't want them to spend any of that fifteen thousand that was budgeted for.
And so ten fifteen was eighty nine thousand, two forty four ninety three.
Well, that's what we start the year with. But we have exactly what we spent in the year. Eight thirty one of them was seventy nine thousand, but.
We got fifteen thousand, maybe one dollars, and we stayed comfortable. And two media that was received and then put wrong about. But we wrote that same amount out. So there's not been a dime spent. Well, because. There was a payroll error, we've been paying that out twelve oh six. And then an adjustment on ten one and twenty four. Because they were turning in payroll on that, they get caught. Shooting eleven sixty one, and they were turning in the twelve six. Then an adjustment is done on ten one, about that. So, and that would be right, cause this is like ten thousand, two hundred thirty seventy four, plus the fifteen thousand and three four thousand.
Environmental was two, was supposed to be paid out twelve oh six.
It was, but when we got eleven sixty one, those things transferred to there. There again, a timing issue with our budget versus the state budget.
But I thought we didn't combine twelve oh six and eleven sixty one.
That was the for twenty twenty four, in January of twenty twenty four, that was the whole uh, thing with that state money, the HFI, our first Indiana funding. When they combined it starting twenty twenty four, January.
Money in twelve oh six, we can budget. Right, but she's gotta go to the state and get.
She has, she's got the liability insurance down out of here like.
Well, that's what, okay, that's what.
Out of twelve oh six or?
Beyond the, yeah, the twelve oh six.
Right, there was three, okay. To take out, I'd like to see all the salaries taken out of long account.
Me too.
So that's what I did, if you look at the. So, help for Indiana, yes, I realigned them, where all the salaries are coming out of eleven.
Okay.
The twelve oh six, which is not on our sheets. Fifty nine on page. Eight of twelve, we were taking. Ten thousand out of liability insurance, moving that to twelve oh six. Twenty five hundred gas and oil, right, and moving that to twelve oh six. Yeah.
No, that's not what we agreed on.
Well, I, I know there was fifteen thousand, so what was the, there was two twenty five hundreds amounts. Equipment insurance, liability insurance.
So I, I'm not sure where you're getting the twelve oh six, the funds for the twelve oh six. And that money, so all that money, so that twelve oh six, remember the eleven sixty eight and the twelve oh six. It's now eleven sixty one, starting twenty twenty four.
Right.
We decided.
But say, say, no.
Starting twenty twenty four, they combined them. Before twenty twenty four, January twenty twenty four, they're not combining those balances. But instead of giving two different grants, starting January twenty twenty four, they just combined them, starting then and created eleven sixty one.
But we can't move the funny, that's funny, the money that's remaining in those two accounts to eleven sixty one. So we have to exhaust those funds, so you want to use those funds for. Or would like to, what would you like to?
Some out of eleven fifty nine, so that we have enough in there to cover all salaries.
Okay.
Instead of taking salaries out of eleven sixty one, eleven sixty eight, twelve oh six, take some of this.
Which is what you did here. Which is what she's showing on this paper. If you don't have one, I have an extra.
The one she revised here out of eleven fifty one, it is increased. Eight nine thousand dollars. Yes, because he wanted the liability that needs to come out of that twelve oh six or eleven sixty eight. That's why that's. And we have reallined, realigned it, so all of um, the salaries come out of eleven fifty nine. And then everything else is in one line item, that was some of the confusion. Is that timing, and we had a line item, several different line items for the same thing.
Okay, so on your little sheet here, Jenny.
Yeah.
What are you taking out of eleven?
That is eleven fifty nine, right.
Which, yes, I do.
But we have twelve oh six that has money in it, right? So, which we've always budgeted fifteen thousand fifty one dollars every year out of twelve oh six. And I gave you ten thousand out of liability insurance, twenty five hundred equipment insurance, and twenty five hundred gas and oil. For fifteen thousand to take that out of eleven fifty nine and move it to take that out of twelve oh six.
Okay.
Almost at our fifteen thousand fifty one dollars.
But I put all of those in eleven sixty one to help first Indiana funds. That's whenever you ask me to realign, yes, I, that's when you ask me to realign it, I did it for the. I, I transferred everything and recreated that budget. To come out of the new Health First Indiana eleven sixty one fund, that three hundred thirty eight thousand.
So you, so you're taking the twenty five hundred gas and oil and taking it out of the one million three hundred ninety eight? Out of eleven fifty nine?
No, out of eleven sixty one. The Health First Indiana funds.
Okay, I'll work, let's, let's deal with twelve oh six right now. So. Twelve oh six, we have fifteen thousand, that's normally. We budget every year, and we can move those three accounts, twelve oh six. Now give the three accept more money in eleven fifty nine.
So you're.
So you. For six years.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get any more money. Be fifteen thousand a year for six years, and so that's.
So I guess my, our question is from our health department and our board is, where did the agreement and the approval of, we would maintain our current budget? Whenever we came to you two months ago, that's our.
Well, we're going to, I mean, we're moving all the salaries in there. Well, we're going to, we're moving all the salaries in there. So we've got to cut some of this money out of eleven fifty nine. Take it in these grants so that we can take all the salaries. Out of eleven fifty nine instead of eleven sixty one, eleven sixty eight.
But if you look at the, the other budget that I just gave you from eleven sixty one, that has everything in there. That has all of that, those um the gas, oil, the education, I I inputted that all into eleven sixty one, the the state funding. I transferred all of that.
Okay, and that's what I asked you. I thought you said you didn't take it out of eleven fifty nine.
I I'm not. I'm not taking it out of eleven fifty nine. I'm taking it out of the. The new state funds.
The HFI.
Yes, the HFI. So that way, you know, some of the concern was that we had the several different line items and this streamlined those line items.
So you're gonna have gas and oil out of two different accounts?
No, no, right now, everything's in one account. She's taking out of eleven fifty nine our these salaries. All of this here is coming out of eleven fifty nine and nothing else. Forget what she see on.
Forget our sheet, yes, forget your sheet that's.
I'm there because that's all. She's got all the salaries coming out of eleven fifty nine. And then all the other stuff, internet, gas and oil. All that stuff, she's combined to one.
To come out of the HFI.
This to come out of HFI eleven sixty one. Correct.
Correct. So the eleven fifty nine budget is now three twenty two instead of the three thirty one that we published.
Yeah, correct, yep.
That was still that, we gotta use up that. Eighty nine thousand.
Right.
So we take thirty B cent out of.
Mm hmm. So I guess there's our question again. It's like what you guys approved two months ago to maintain our current budget. That was in in lieu of this money too, because we do have additional expenses. You know, we do have a server coming out. It could be, it could be up to twenty thousand dollars.
And take that out of. Twelve oh six, so you can go.
That's what we're, we have to, but I guess where our confusion is, is what, what part of, did you guys approve? If you approved to maintain our budget. I mean, I don't know. You know, why we're going to twelve oh six and and eleven sixty eight if you approved our budget as it was.
Well, we didn't approve any budgets. We just said we would look at keeping that money, but this was the budget process.
Well, I mean, you maintained or you you approved to maintain our budget. I guess that's where our confusion's at. It's like.
Well, I I guess, you know. I'm having conversations with. Possible, the possibility of. Who's gonna be in control of commissioners in January. They've asked me to do some changes on this and you know, no matter what we approve here. They're the ones that's gonna finally say whether any of these bills get paid in January.
And that's, that's.
Budget it or not. So I'm trying to make some changes that they've asked me to, to look at.
And again, part of my frustration is, why doesn't anyone talk to us about that? Why does anyone talk to our department? You know, that's our frustration.
Once not elected yet.
Okay, so I guess, and why are we talking to them worried about our budget? That's my question. I know that that's a concern for January one, but I have to worry about today.
Well, this is all for next year.
I know, but we have to have it approved for today. So it's like, I I understand, but it's like. It's it's still our money, whether we use it in one line or we use it from another, it's still our, our money in the county.
Actually, it's taxpayers' dollars and they. Are asking questions too, so.
Well, it's still, it's, but it's still their money.
Tax dollar, yeah, this is coming from the state, but. You know, we have. The tax revenue that's coming in, that they're paying property taxes on and in. But we've got this money sitting there from the state. We need to be spending it.
And.
We don't want to tell us to say, hey, we want this money back.
No, they're not going to ask for it back.
Fifteen thousand every year out of twelve oh six, thirty eight thousand two twenty nine out of eleven sixty eight, forty five thousand five thirty one out of eleven sixty one, which I think eleven sixty one is. Completely gone, right?
One is the HFI.
Okay. So we need to be spending that money. And give the taxpayers what they need.
You're saying that. One of you know, these things along. So if done with. You don't want to pull that out of eleven sixty one.
Not out of eleven sixty eight or twelve oh seven. Yeah, either way, it's there as a balance. That we're not free of. We, you know, we have to come to you either way. We just want to keep the budget the way it was. You know, it makes our life easier. That's what we discussed earlier. Some of the confusion is streamlining this and then, you know, we're going back to the same thing.
Was that was, wasn't that our discussion when we opted in to the HFIs that we were gonna retain? The existing budget, that this was. Money in addition to. Not. Any less than that. There was no cutting out. You know, stacked paper or. Paper clips, things like that. My decision was based upon, it was layered on top of. What was already there. And so I'm with Jenny is I don't like. The bait and switch in where we agree to something. And then we're flipping and we're. We're looking to change it or cut it out.
And the, and the problem is, is they're being dictated what they. Somewhat what they have to do with this money. State says, hey, you've got to have all these programs in addition to what you're doing.
Yeah, but we were told that.
That's what I mean.
We were told that in the beginning, so. We we were okay with it, so was the commissioners. We had a meeting matter of fact, so I agree with Dave.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with these figures. I mean, that makes sense. Did you redo this page at all or?
That's where, where.
Okay.
Yes, so all of those others are rolled into that.
Just rolled in.
Yes.
Access and the.
Yep.
Personal stipend.
Yep, yep.
Power, basically, yeah.
Okay, and that, that makes sense. Yeah, it did roll into that and clean that all up. It it hope, you know. That timing issue with those uh to missiles.
You don't want your budget messed up because that's where you presented. I think what we're trying to do either. Is find certain categories to swing some of this money over. And still use. Other many other places.
Right.
I think that's what happened. I guess confused. I don't want to see your budget changed. But um. At the same time, if we can move.
So I would propose that we wait until, until next year. We have twelve oh six, eleven sixty eight, it's gonna be there. I can't use that money. Unless I go to the commissioners and come to you guys. It it's, they're not taking it back. Um, they're not doing anything with it. It's still. It it's maintained no different than than the other uh line item of eleven fifty nine.
And the thing with it is, we only advertised for forty eight thousand four eleven for eleven seventy one. We can't change that. We can't add to that. So we're going to have to do an additional anyhow. So there is time. I mean. I can't add that. I mean, I can do it on paper, but when I do it on gateway, it's. It cannot be a penny over what I advertised.
Right.
Now I can change the line items for. Eleven fifty nine, as long as I don't go over the one, that dollar amount.
So eleven sixty one is gonna include the HFI funds now.
Yes, but we didn't advertise.
We didn't have that, you know, I didn't advertise.
So you didn't advertise twelve oh six?
No, because we're not using it. We haven't, we haven't used it at all this year. Because I had to start with twelve or eleven sixty one on January one.
Right.
I mean, yes, it shows things out there, but that was an error and I caught it and we corrected it.
Didn't there as eleven sixty three a year, right?
No, because it's same thing. You don't, all that grant money was combined. And they said you have to. Deposit any into eleven sixty one, those other two funds are defunct. So then when. Jenny was gonna talk to the state, I said, please check with them to see if we can roll that money into eleven sixty one and they said absolutely not. But you cannot combine fund or grant funds. So I mean, yes, you can probably still use the federal insurance, but it's gonna have to go through the carryover process. Which is our additional preparation process. They just. Call it something different.
So looking. At next year when we advertise, we're gonna have to advertise those two funds. For expenditures for the budget.
So we might best. Council, I think it's just. With what additional grant is going to be. I can have a revenue as soon as that portal opens. I mean, I can go ahead and advertise in January, but as soon as that portal opens, I can shoot it through. You guys can approve it. And then once it opens, we can get approval from the LGF.
So the carryover. By building insurance. Do you have to carry over that? Ten thousand and pay it out twelve oh six?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that we discussed.
What else can we use those funds for? Is there a stipulation?
Scrap them.
Yeah.
It's.
Just as long as you have mutual agreement.
We have to get their approval first.
Yeah.
Well, then discuss salaries and.
So on the green sheet. All great.
That everything combined.
Yeah, so. Agent salaries that you did, what? Kind of a raises for those, do you remember or?
Um, that was, all of the grants included in eleven fifty nine, eleven sixty one and. Ninety seven seventy five, which is the FEP grant for Eric. That I think that, and then that's five percent stipend that we'd forgive or giving for um the HFI additional duties. So that's all of those salaries.
It looks like they were about five percent.
Yes, yeah.
That's, that's the question, sorry. They were. They're about five percent raises, this would. Scott. Except the one.
So Eric said, the environment one is that, it is a five percent, but he, we still get that FEP grant. And it's a twenty five thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
So we just left that.
So there are no salaries coming out of any account except for the eleven fifty nine.
The FEP grant, that's that twenty five thousand dollar, yes, that is one salary. It's twenty five thousand dollars.
And that goes to.
Eric.
Okay, and so it's thirty thousand plus twenty five thousand.
Yes.
FEP grant, okay. Then. So the nurse and all that is all, it was not, there's no salaries coming out of the.
The nurse is still.
Three hundred thirty eight thousand.
Everything is out of eleven fifty nine.
Okay.
Besides that one.
So, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I was thinking of. Um, the person who's.
And that might be a contract, yeah, yeah, that's.
Celebrity potential will be a contract. And the health officer, the twenty seven five sixty three, that's part time, but he does get full benefits. What's that? That's what the commissioners agreed to.
Um, they only. A clerk. See, I believe the clerk was paid the same as our cost benefits, so.
Yes.
She got her thirty nine to two oh nine, but we paid theirs forty thousand and twenty six dollars, so.
That's fair.
The court should be at that amount.
Forty oh two six.
Yeah.
Get that one down, don't we?
We have that memorized.
How many moves do the board members have? How do we do that once a run for?
Minimum uh four times a year. I think they give approximately sixty six dollars, I mean, somewhere around them there.
Seventeen fifty four it was last year and we didn't give any other awards. That increase. That, that's not changing, so.
Okay.
Um, well, about social security. Is, what's that coming out of?
Eleven fifty nine.
Oh, I didn't see that on here though. Oh, okay, so we have no way. That, oh, but, oh, yes, I might need to have to go up a little bit because your corpse. And does that cover the? Twenty five thousand out of that, does that make sure that's figured right then with social security? Everybody put David a salary. Okay. Of eleven sixty one, we're. Getting that we do it all right. On the sheets. That's moved into.
The salaries. Well, she's got to come in out of there. Is the. Retirement. No, there's.
He gets out of ten month fifty nine. He gets out of ninety seven six seven, ninety fifty nine. Retire.
Well, it's there to be a new.
Yeah, that might be Eric down there.
That's one out.
Yeah, that's the grant coordinator's her.
Yes, so that's, she's the other one. And it's, I'm here. On the new. Uh, eleven sixty one, that is HFI. I said three hundred thirty eight thousand.
Okay.
Retirement is coming out of that.
Oh, that's right, okay, so eleven sixty is not on there, well, like you said, it's clearly didn't advertise.
Right.
Okay. Then I'm, okay. They'll just have to give us. Take that on.
Did you say, did you say you're okay?
Yeah, so eleven sixty one is. The new HFI. Yeah, right?
Yes.
So this needs to be. Changed to fifteen two one four on here to three hundred thirty eight thousand, right?
But she can't.
But you can't.
Because she didn't advertise.
It's advertised at forty eight thousand. With, with this spreadsheet, it didn't. I didn't put anything else in there because of all the changes. I kind of ignored that.
Okay.
So I'm going to have to go in here and plug in the numbers. I think I'll let Jenny read it and make sure I got it right, and then I'll send it to you guys. So you can look at it and then get back to Jenny and I as to. If there's a problem.
Okay.
So.
Would you raise uh?
Yeah.
Just a little.
No, we didn't. Kept it the same, yeah.
It will be, you know, they're gonna have the same turn in town here.
We'll see.
I don't know if he, if he had notified people he wasn't on media.
I know, yes, we have not heard any.
Okay. But you know, you know about the count.
Oh, okay.
Right, right?
That's the way.
The net, I don't think. Now he's, he's turned it, it's that he won't. He'll finish up and go. No. I think his email said he would, is, he'd stay till the end of the year unless they wanted to change, but. I thought I told everybody that.
I heard you. I heard you.
Hey, you guys just tuned me out.
Well, he didn't know, he didn't, I didn't hear, I was probably thinking about the beep house, you know?
Okay, so if we have any more questions on the House Department, so after. Colin gets all those numbers.
I have nothing else.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
You wanna move the judge, judges here.
She said we didn't talk about the part-time person, so she wanted to follow up the. Both ends of the part-time, but since she already had her time, she felt it was important, and she let the other people go, and she waited till the end.
One, and then we got a lot of.
And saving the best for last.
He did that, and said whoever showed up last was sent by.
That's right.
Oh, I just wanted to remind you that the one I mentioned, I hired anybody at the part-time for the full-time rate. But I remember Tom saying to me last year, why are you asking for less to pay that person, and at that point, I didn't go, I could bring somebody who knew what it is. At the same rate that we experienced, we could something have, so I just was not able to fill that position. Um, I got salary, so I was trying to come up with. Financially responsible alternatives. They're applying for the security center grant. Next year. Uh, so hopefully, if I can hire this person just on an hourly basis. Part-time and at a little more lucrative. Adorable.
Good time to have a form to minstrel.
Yes, just a little bit of that salary-wise, which only to.
I had written down thirty thousand one six.
So did I, that's what I didn't plan to change it to.
Well, we have, I mean, we have.
No, I mean, but I didn't receive a, a draft.
But we probably would need to. On the salary ordinance, it's gonna have to say whether it's part-time or full-time, an hour rate, so. Uh, we'll need to know that before we.
We talked about that.
Twenty hours a week, that's twenty-nine dollars an hour, is what that looks up to. For thirty thousand one sixty.
I'm sorry, twenty hours a week?
For fifty-two weeks, that works out to be twenty-nine dollars an hour, to equal the thirty. To equal the thirty thousand one fifty that we put in there, so I guess.
Okay.
That's what we put in there.
I, it was budgeted at thirty-eight thousand, I think, last year.
Thirty-seven three twenty-one.
Then I finally just quit because with the responsibilities that I had writing and everything brought, I couldn't say I hired you.
Andrew left, so we can do whatever we want with Sheriff Department.
He said he didn't hear.
So that's it, we're done with the sheriff's department?
Yeah, we're done. We took care of it.
Well, I thought I said Andrew left, so we can do whatever we want, and Sheriff.
Dana was here, actually. Maybe she had to step in the office or something.
Yeah, let's start counting general first, I mean, uh. The judge did a question about the older, I mean, does. Pressure is gonna be. One night of. One night, night meeting, one day meeting, going back to overtime, and I've been, did anybody stay tonight?
No, I may have forgotten.
Okay, well, I, I saw Carol here, I figured the door must be unlocked.
And another thing, another thing too. Um, another thing too, Tom and I may not sit on this board. January, and the new council may decide they want to do a working session in the evening, in addition to their regular meeting. So.
Do you know that?
I don't know that for sure, but I'm just saying, we gotta be prepared for anything. You know, they may not want to do five-hour meetings.
Oh, I just love them.
Just saying, just saying. And they may want to have a working session to work through all their stuff, so when they have their regular meeting.
I still go back to this, where are they? Why aren't they here?
We attended meetings from here before we got. Well, that's for later to be determined, so that's not.
All right, let's.
Let's go to page five of the jail.
Page five.
The magistrate is gonna be paid the same amount as the laws paid him.
But we may even increase that overtime, yeah.
Yes, and while when we do the deputies, we'll go back and do so long. The judges.
Yeah, because his overtime is the judge's budget.
That's right.
I'm thinking that should be moved. Getting most of the overtime right now.
That sounds fair.
So, we will, um. When we determine that amount, given that. Yes, yes, it's.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
The safety officer, and then there's the overtime for the safety officer.
That's the overtime for safety officers, what they want to say.
Okay, so.
This more papers could be marked up like everything else. Yeah.
So. The twenty twenty-five request for the magistrate of sixty thousand, is that what the laws pay deputies?
Sixty five?
Sixty thousand.
She's very.
Deputy maiden. They did a five percent raise from forty-two to forty-four.
Deputy matron's one? Forty-four.
Six four three. On the maiden. Andrew. I could last twenty months. Well, has.
It probably is.
Shared such a high rate.
Be the deputy, lowest paid deputy.
Has to be equal to lowest paid.
The average of the counties is forty-five, just over forty-five thousand.
Maintenance groundskeeper, is that just a part-time position?
Yeah, so we have, uh, John Sher. Who's doing that for us twenty, I think he works twenty hours, twenty-four hours a week.
So nineteen, two eighty-two?
He does the maintenance on. Around the jail, and then mows, weeds, eats.
Okay.
Works for nice. Behind the boiler, eight going.
Okay, jailers. It's like nine eleven for that increase.
How many jailers are there? Just out of curiosity.
So we have, we have twenty jail positions, but. We only have eighteen. In the jail, and then one of them is.
Here.
Here, for security.
So seventeen?
And what we were doing on the point one was, we were taking that. Salary for our part-time maintenance guy. So that was. Basically, we're taking the money out of that salary to pay him. He's, we had him listed under as a jailer, but he's only working twenty-four hours a week.
I see where you, okay.
You think that's how four jail sergeants?
Yes.
And sixteen jailers, and then gun commander?
Yes.
Jail commander is your daily spot.
Yes.
So, did the jailers get a, a raise when we did all the shifts? So what are the jail, were some sixteen jailers being paid right there? Cause. Those six, six forty-seven, this is six thirty-seven.
Oh, because.
Yeah, so if you take this twenty-four ad hoc.
Okay, so you asked about the maiden, uh, said, they increased that. I think our sheet here says. She got a raise when the deputy, so it's seven five, so it's going to be.
It's going up four percent.
Four percent, yeah.
And the. So jailers are, well, this is, the salary ordinance says fifteen. Okay, and that's what's good. That's forty-two thousand five hundred and seven. Forty-two five one seven, yeah.
Oh, cause they're working, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You said five percent, could you wait?
I think I. Let me kind of go back here and then deal.
Five percent takes them to forty-four, six four.
No, that's not right, because they're paid different, yeah. Yeah, see, it's.
So we, we asked for four percent of the jailers and five percent on the sergeants. To, to move them away from each other a little more, we tried doing this a couple of years ago, it didn't work out, they're. They're like twenty-five or thirty dollars, that's more to be a sergeant than that.
Four percent, five percent, that makes sense, yes, spread them a little bit.
Uh, that isn't right. Or because your request is almost, is over a ten percent.
They did ask for five percent here. They, they asked for forty-five thousand two seventy-four ninety-five for the jail sergeants.
For sergeant, yeah, okay.
And officer sixteen at forty-four thousand two sixteen sixty-four, which is a four percent increase.
Okay, but you're going from fifteen jailers into sixteen jailers, this year is only fifteen on Saturday, not one.
There is, we just set it up. It might be we increase it because of the.
If that's the case, then. Then, yeah, I guess you can.
Yeah, cause fifteen, four hundred, forty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen, and. For fifteen people, it's a budget of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven fifty. If you divide the seven oh seven, four six six, or fifteen. Comes to forty-seven thousand one sixty-four, that's almost eleven.
Yeah, they figured, they figured that seven hundred and seven thousand on sixteen.
Yeah, I have sixteen, I read.
Change that seven oh seven then to.
Don't we figure it for fifteen of them?
Did you say four or five?
Four percent for the jailers.
Okay, so forty-two nine four seven. That would be six sixty-three, two sixty-six.
Sixty-three, two oh six. Two sixty-six, so six sixty-three, two oh six.
Two six six three two six.
Six, six, okay.
So we're all right with that.
So they're gonna make forty-four thousand two seventeen, one times fifteen.
So then the jail commander.
So then we need to make sure and. Put that part-time position for our groundskeeping. In a, in a separate line.
On the salary one, it needs to have.
Is it four percent for the jailers? It's like I can't people today, I guess.
Okay, so now we're ready for the jail commander.
And there's just one?
So, I mean, what is the average?
It's not on that sheet.
It's on the jail side, actually.
They've got sixty-six thousand for him.
That's just giving him his longevity.
One county's at fifty-seven. But then I know we did some of deputy. The average deputy in the other counties is like fifty-three thousand, one county's at fifty-seven, seven seventy. For deputies.
Then you got the city of Annika in there, paying for their. Then you got the city of Annika in there paying for their. It's a constant battle between the county and the city.
County just got the same. They've done the exact same thing that. We all done back in February.
Yeah.
Orange County, they're the same. Pay right now.
So the longevity on the sixty six thousand, what's?
There is no longevity, it's included in their pay.
Yeah, so it's two thousand every other year. So that would. Ease up for a man to ever be raised in January. That would be putting it forward to the speed.
So what is he at currently?
Sixty four.
Sixty four flat?
Sixty six.
Yeah. That's just, that's his longevity raise.
Am I okay with that?
Thank you, is it? I show sixty three, oh thirty seven, what he's at, but.
Sixty seven two.
Six, well, it's because it wasn't a full year, that's why they showed her, okay.
So we're going to sixty seven two?
About sixty.
Sixty six.
Jail sergeants, you say five percent on them?
Yes.
Okay, there's four, okay, so they are. Forty three, one one down range. Seven, ninety three, seven, five. So you actually one seventy nine, three seventy six. So, you know, so.
Well, we don't want to short a dollar. Over. Four people, twenty five cents.
Isn't off four cents, so.
I'm, I'm showing the better one.
That's what I was showing too.
So maybe I had a bad math feature.
Your math isn't happening?
I think you're doing pretty well. Uh, forty, forty five.
Percent, right?
That's, yeah.
So they're currently at forty five?
And they're, three, one, one, nine. Yeah, right, sorry, one eighty one, one hundred.
One eighty one, one hundred.
Okay. Forty five, two seventy five?
What's that?
I'm at forty five thousand, two seventy five.
I think so. Yeah. Forty. Forty five, seventy five, yes.
Let's regroup that, let's tell you the maitress, what, sixty?
Sixty.
Forty four for the maitress.
Forty four, six forty three for the. Deputy, nineteen, two eighty two for the groundskeeper, six hundred and sixty three thousand, two sixty six for fifteen jailers.
Forty four, two seventy.
Right, sixty six thousand for the jail commander, and one eighty one, one hundred for the.
Sixty six even?
Jail sergeants.
Sixty badge.
Okay. That take care of the jail.
Page, page.
Move subs security and sheriff to county general, cause of that one safety. And for those. Transport officer. Have paid out of the same, can have to count, uh.
Fracture, fracture, thorough.
Yeah, fraction, thorough, page ten. So. What, what's your request for the transport officer?
Five for the.
Which is.
You want five to take our app, or you want?
Fracture, okay, transport.
Many times that.
But forty one, two thirty two, right, so they give A's, and then we're. Giving up that's five percent. The transport officer. So forty.
Forty one does?
Eight thousand, six one, this year.
The shared request, they're twenty one thousand, six forty six, eighty, for the transit officer. Out of his portion, that's a five percent increase, so twenty one, six forty six. Eighty times. Forty three, two ninety six.
So he's.
Twenty one, six forty seven, right, down each budget.
Down at each one, twenty one, six, only seven, that's what I thought too.
Transport officers, twenty one, six forty seven, out of. Sheriff's on page eight, and then, we already have it, twenty one, six forty seven.
On the ten.
And that's okay.
Yeah, I called, they, totally mothered him.
Okay.
Where else they paid?
And. So, um. Service a lot. Sheriff's retirement, he moved to county general. And chief.
Is this hearings last year? He's got two more, he knows that. Trying to keep track.
Twenty four seven, January twenty seven.
Okay.
December. On you, that's, that's why we asked for five percent on top of longevity for the top, yes. And everybody below that sergeant's position would be where they need to be with their longevity. They would be spot on. In the line. Kind of. Try to probably catch up here since we got the gap of fifteen percent.
Okay, so what are we requesting upon the nation? Chief deputy, the detective, and the other delegates.
Both of our longevity. Plus five percent.
Thought we got rid of longevity when we did their raises this last year. So I'm giving it to him again. Just for the chief deputy.
So. We had spoken about that, uh, with the, with the county longevity, the way it was said. You're twenty five plus years, you get two thousand dollars every year, so.
And we did away with that when we did the big human races.
I don't think so Denise, I think that was. I think that was in the two thousand dollars.
It takes into account what. Their, their, it's only increased it.
It also. It also never, uh. I guess Bob's longevity, Bob's longevity never.
We're way over.
Was where.
On the other.
Should have been for the longevity. For the years of service. We're still nineteen thousand, all the dog.
I don't know, I'd like to see that scan.
Where is the app? I don't have the app.
So. Yeah, right here.
Do we know what the chief deputy gets paid?
Right now.
Right now?
I mean, that's right.
It might, it might be right.
Six thousand.
Yeah.
Seventy.
Seventy six thousand.
Right, that's right, okay, that's what's on the average.
Okay. Does any of it card?
Forty eight thousand, sixty, sixty two, fifty two.
Sixty two.
Six. The only one close is Brown, it's sixty nine.
What, are you looking at?
Other two deputies, same county.
County, similar, similar size.
We were given those to help with salaries. On all departments.
You have that chart that you gave us last year?
Oh, no, I mean, this is.
That's probably my.
Each year, they carried it up seventy years.
Thirty five dollars.
That two thousand dollars was in.
Two thousand dollars every other year of service.
So therefore.
The discussion was, we, when we did those races, we gave races at that time and jumped a lot of people up based on. How long they've been there, but we did not want to lock us in. In the future that we were guaranteed to do races or anything like that, because we didn't know who was gonna be in council or what the budget would look like. And that's why we took that out, that was the discussion.
Uh, from my understanding, it was. Uh, the longevity was. Going to be every year, now the cost of living raise on top of it. Uh, was the. At the beck and of the council. You know, as you thought it about, but.
We can go back and look later, we'll send that, that's what I was talking about, because that's how we did highway too. Based on what we didn't officially.
Sure.
So you did, county highway was two thousand every other year, just same, same way?
Yeah, we didn't do it guarantee.
No, I'm saying you, did you?
They gave up their longevity when we did the big races, and one of those races were based on how long you simply have been there, so they're not all paid the same.
Right, that's, that's what we were, we. We gave up the county longevity, so to speak, to go on. The. A maitress. Longevity is, from my understanding, is what I. Was proposing out of it.
Now I'm trying to find it. Beginning of the degree.
When we, when we got done with our discussion in February, okay, made. Chief deputy said the six. Okay, so it's just a five percent raise.
Right.
Wow, plus two thousand for longevity.
Didn't, didn't say every other year.
Yeah, every other year.
So we didn't do the two thousand last year.
Well, I.
Yeah.
So I was in two thousand and eleven. So twenty five would make fourteen years.
Yeah, but I thought with our, with. What you and I talked about, it was just going to be two thousand every year.
That was the original, that's what I thought.
You.
Did with the others.
I got capped at fifteen percent, that wouldn't have cost me all the years of service.
If the others.
Uh, well.
Okay, so this was done.
Rainy, colossal.
That's right, that's right.
But if, they get the longevity where it's supposed to be, it should be right, right there where I proposed.
Okay, so this was done in twenty twenty four. A motion was made by Denise Crowder, seconded by Kelly Carlson, to increase the salaries with a fifteen percent cap. They will agree to two thousand longevity paid every two years, then after twenty five years, service longevity will be paid yearly in the amount of two thousand. The council will look at the cost of living each year, the officers who do instruction training will receive one thousand dollars each, with the exception of Kim. And he will receive two thousand as he is uninstructed for two classes. They will increase their retirement to thirty two years. So we give two thousand dollars in twenty twenty four, it means it won't be until twenty twenty six.
No, it's, it's all off a higher date, that's how we have to keep track of it.
Uh, it says we'll agree to, and pay every two years, so it's paid in twenty four, so it won't be paid until twenty six.
But that's not how we did it when we done everybody's longevity, we went back to their higher date. And from the higher date, we, we gave them their years of service.
But we didn't go by that. When we did, cause it was. Hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase, it would have been like what was presented.
It was.
I thought since we did last year, we weren't gonna.
Yeah, until twenty twenty six, so. That's what the minutes say, so.
Now we're six bunch times, so we.
Or the minutes accurate. I even, I discussed this, we, we went back to that, how we had to figure out.
That, I mean, that's why I did it, but.
Well, Dave, was that the only way? Yeah.
Cause the long that we have others.
Well, that was twenty six.
That's what I thought.
Two thousand, twenty twenty six, plus whatever the cost of the. So, just because of living.
Yes, that's how we figured out the longevity here, it was.
Every two years.
It's every two years, it's every two years of service from your higher date at the county.
So that's. Said we'll agree to two thousand longevity paid every two summers. So it was paid twenty four, it won't be paid again until twenty six.
Twenty five.
So, did, did everybody get it paid in twenty twenty four?
Did everybody get two thousand?
Well, everybody got a raise, that was, you know, they got the raise of that.
Yeah, they, they. They got the longevity. So sixty thousand dollar base salary. And they got their longevity based off of how many years of service they've had here at the sheriff's office. From that sixty thousand dollar flat salary, that's how I figured people are sixty two, or sixty four, sixty six, or seventy six, whatever.
What's happened?
That's how I had written down. That's what.
Basically what long?
And their data hard?
Data hard.
Yeah.
So there's nothing in the minutes.
I know, it's a long, I know it's a long discussion, I only went back and forth and.
About three hours.
Yeah.
That's the only, otherwise, you're, you're going to be. It's not going to be. A fair number on their salary with their years of service, if you, because a guy could have had. Five years when we enacted this, and there's six years coming up, and if it's every other year, they should have. Six thousand dollars of that sixty thousand.
I had the years wrote down. That they were hired in, I mean, when they were hired, the years wrote down, and then I have it. Uh. Based on their longevity.
I think we were trying to get them all.
So some of them got. On the raise, got. Eight, six, eight percent rate.
They did, some got fifteen, yeah. I think we were trying to get them all to an even spot. I think we were trying to get them all to an even spot and then say every two years going forward, not an even spot, and even based on their years and then from now on every three years.
And we did that in twenty four.
Two years.
Twenty twelve.
Really, they got a raise. Another raise was twenty four.
And so it doesn't, so it's not gonna go up years of service. Oh, yes. This just get.
Okay.
They just got filled every as a person, plus every year on that piece of.
Where everything. Unless you get twenty five years of service and you get it every year. Grab anybody that has twenty five years of service yet.
Bob.
Something you can do that's. That's. And I have to go back on this.
I agree. I said, they'll be some things they've always been.
No, I'm not suggesting, I'm just, that would help clarify the minutes. I know sometimes, not your minutes, anybody's minutes, don't always reflect the conversation that actually took place. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm not saying it's wrong.
On February twelfth, twenty twenty four, I wrote down in my book, we talked about pensions and longevity. And it says longevity pay two thousand dollars every two years. And this was February twelfth, twenty twenty four. And then I have money paid to start frontloading. The pay scale would be a hundred and seventy thousand, three sixty six in salaries, thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars in taxes, for a total of a hundred and eighty three thousand, nine hundred and ninety five dollars. Pension twenty twenty five, a hundred and sixty thousand, four oh four at the current rate of a twenty six year. And in twenty twenty five, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars at the current as of a twenty six year or a two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a thirty two year. We will move pension from a twenty six year plan to a thirty two year plan. You guys wanted to do that. So we, we agreed to do that. Pay matrix is similar to Montgomery County, which is currently at fifty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for a new deputy for Montgomery County. So that's what I have written down. And then I have the whole thing.
Probably.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Thank you.
And then it goes on.
All right, it's a long discussion.
It was a big discussion and it continues. Cost of living uh, every year and then a two thousand dollar longevity, which would I didn't have it written down as every two years or every year, but that's what I had written down.
I know the, the longevity under what I was assuming when I walked out of that meeting was two thousand dollars every other year for service on each debit. So you, you would have to go to their higher date to figure out when their two years of services up to get them their longevity raises. Otherwise, I think some guys would get screwed. Sorry about my, and, and some guys would gain a year in advance.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Based on their hire date.
And at the end result, they may, they may have more money on their salary when they go to retire than they should have with that longevity.
Look to stay, I think it has to be like it all. Not in this year, they shouldn't have been, not in the next year.
So Colleen, does their longevity, i- is it the same as everybody else's?
Sheriff's Department?
Yes, start date and stuff like that. Cause we, we've had this discussion that everybody just naturally assumes January one is when they get their longevity and it's not based off of their hire date, which I don't understand that. I think that's crazy.
Longevity is basically, yeah, everybody's.
Okay, so, so his, his would be by the hire date, correct? Okay.
Yes.
That's the, that's like.
That's not what, that says they were to you. I'm saying nothing about.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, does their longevity
No.
the same as every other employee in the county?
From, from my minutes, it was said that every two years they can get two thousand dollars longevity.
Mm-hmm.
They came off the county plan.
But once they met, you can't get it after a certain amount of years. Am I correct?
No.
After twenty five years.
Year.
Year.
Okay.
There was, so there was never a cap put on it.
Okay.
I mean, I know our pension is thirty two year pension. There, there was never a cap discussed. Um, but we did discuss the fact that twenty five years on the old longevity we were on, twenty five years, you were getting a two thousand dollar check every year. So if we, if we only done it every other year for Bob, we would be taking away two thousand dollars from him every other year that he would have gotten on the old system. That's why we talked about that twenty five year one.
Well, if it would have been, I hate to say it, if it would have been every other year, I would have wrote it down that way.
But as far as the longevity goes, so.
Yeah.
December two thousand, I remember some.
So if January of twenty six rolls around and and you got a guy with five years on and you got a guy with six years on, you're still gonna give all of them the two thousand dollars and they didn't, they weren't here that even year to earn.
I, I can see your point there, but we gotta go by what the minutes read. I mean, cause I can see if somebody gets hired this year, they're gonna get two thousand next year, twenty twenty six, whether they've been there a year, but but the way this is written and the way it was voted on, it's twenty four, twenty six, twenty eight, thirty is the way I read it.
And if we do go the way he wants it with years of service, then that salary, that two thousand dollar salary increase shouldn't start until June fifteenth or whatever their hire date was, not January one.
Yeah, you can't have it both ways.
And you kind of ever trying to do it, it's always January one. I don't, you know, but I don't think that's what that reads, but you can't do it January one, even if you, if you did want it that way, that wouldn't have been fair.
So let me ask you this, was there anybody in the year of twenty four that got a longevity pay from the sheriff's department?
All of them. That's how all the salaries are.
Okay, so you're thinking the longevity should be starting, should be odd year numbers.
It just depends. Like some, some of these deputies didn't, for twenty five, some of these deputies didn't get a raise at all. And the ones that have been here even years did get a longevity raise.
I thought everybody got a raise last year.
So we.
Last year.
Everybody got a.
I'm, I'm saying for twenty five, this new budget, this was.
Let's talk about what we voted on on the race and everybody get.
Everybody got a raise, yes, yes. That's true too.
Definitely, they're not getting a bonus. The longevity pay is something that isn't a bonus. It's part of their salary.
Right, but that's, that's what I mean by the longevity. I think for, I think about it as a bonus.
It's not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's an increase to their salary. And that's why it was gave them a big month in twenty four and then every two years after for that. It's part of their salary.
I guess the question, it just comes down to, we're at odds, whether it's every year or every two years. Am, am I right in thinking that?
Yeah, and I think that at the end of the day, we, well, again, I guess you either pay you know, say eight thousand dollars in the longevity raises this year, or we pay out twenty eight thousand dollars next year for all of them to have it, instead of eight thousand this year, ten thousand next year.
Mm-hmm.
Bouncing back and forth. I can tell you that's, I mean, that's not what I.
So what does?
That's not what I was proposing and that's not what I
perceived it as. Yeah, he didn't, yeah.
So what, what do you, I guess, want to clear? Maybe every deputy should get two thousand dollar longevity.
Every other year of their ser- of their service. So I went through there from higher date. You have to advertise, so if even if we go by the actual date of higher date, this budget we're gonna have to advertise for regardless if it goes in January first or goes in June.
We did it last year. We did it three weeks, but in their years of service, so we gave them.
But twenty twenty five is a new year. And so the guys that maybe last year were only at nine years of service, they hit the ten year mark. That's an even year. They should get another two thousand. And at the twelve year mark, they should get another two thousand. And at the fourteen mark, they should.
At the top. Involve at the top.
Bob is at the top.
That's what I thought. And that's what's messing up here. That's what's really in you, you're dealing well. And then every other year, and it looks like he should come up this coming twenty five. And I thought so because he's got the greatest longevity. Yeah, and that's, that kind of throws a key for everybody else but Bob at the top. That's the way it worked out. And so you're going by height there. And that's it.
So one year they know that we did a two year credit. Every year, for a whole year. So.
You did propose, you, you did propose that.
He wouldn't have signed that.
I, I propose at year two, you're gonna get two thousand dollars. At year four, you're gonna get another two thousand dollars. At year six, you're gonna get another per individual deputy of good service.
Yeah. I think. Yeah. With what Andrew's saying, if we pull the two thousand out of the salary and not pay it over the year and go by the higher date and give them two thousand dollars, which is every two years of years of service, but we're gonna have to separate out.
So now you're going back to a lump sum, two thousand dollars. Yes, it'll have to be a lump sum. Otherwise, it's gonna be a payroll that year.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be all deductions that you guys don't want. Yeah, that's, that, that's what we just discussed. That's what we just discussed. That's why we, we did it. We got them to deal and then said.
Always proposed. Because that, that's through the salary uh, at, at the end. Because we're gonna be stuck at sixty six thousand. You're gonna cut me a two thousand dollar stipend, then next year I'm at sixty six thousand and you cut me another two thousand.
They wanted in their salary because that's what their pension is based on.
That's what our pension is, yep. And that's, that's why I proposed this the way that I proposed. Yeah.
Okay, see, I will.
Can have it both ways.
You can't have it both ways. Yeah, I mean.
It's gonna be one way or the other.
Yeah.
You voted to put it on our salary.
Right. Everybody.
To help with pension, right?
Well, that was our reason.
Well, well, not all of that, but yeah, really. Pretty low.
And.
Yeah.
Figured it like all year long.
I know it's gonna be a lot of work, like. But if you figure it out to where a deputy hits their year year two, that higher date or whatever, and that next check reflects their raise, then you're just gonna, what I'm afraid we're gonna run into is we're gonna be doing a lot of uh, salary amendments throughout the year.
Yeah.
That's, that's what's gonna be used every meeting.
You would have to do salary if you do them throughout the year on data service. That's why we
Yeah.
That's why it was the easy way to say, get you all to a decent pay rate. And then every two years after, we would start doing that because that way if different people are in office, auditor, sheriff, that way like it's clean. You don't have to have a, I mean, we could. Parole nightmare. It's gonna be a nightmare.
You want her to check.
Yeah.
This month I gotta change this person. Next month, I think.
You agree.
I think that's why I decided that it was gonna be every other year.
And that would make sense, that would.
Yeah.
I would think of that way, but yeah.
I see what Andrew's.
I do too, but I think it's.
And some people are going to get a two thousand, when they only been here a year, but that's.
And it's gonna be a year three, five.
Yeah.
It's a decent person.
But I, I think.
Which is wrong by three year time. What should be wrong for, to my three year time.
Well, no, because they got a raise this year. So it only two years and then he's gonna get another two thousand. The three year guy, I have only been here a year and he got a good raise, so. It, it, and so it's not gonna affect anybody that's currently, they're not gonna get this out because they're gonna get it every few years. It's just gonna be that somebody gets hired this year during the year, then next year they're gonna get a two, two thousand. Just because of the way it was written, that was two thousand.
Well, then let's, let's talk about catching up the longevity for the ones that we didn't catch up on. Uh, my points would be Clausen, Rainey, Kim, myself. Yes, but from bowling down, everybody got their two thousand for every other year that they were.
Yeah, they just got a two thousand flat rate, right?
No.
No, they got the raise plus two thousand.
You know, they just.
They just got a big raise based on. I mean, they went from like fifty seven five to they got like a, almost a seventy five hundred dollar raise.
Mm-hmm.
The big chunk of them. That's, they went from fifty seven five to sixty four, nine, seventy five.
That's the way I have it written down.
Right.
If you go from.
I don't know if this is right.
Yeah, we.
But then the.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Andrew, go ahead. So, so Rainey Clausen, Bowling Paxton Powell.
Bowling Paxton Powell, they all got, they, they were all where they needed to be when we done the, the raise.
Okay, so when we did that, were they at fifty seven five? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I think so because we left Tucker there because he was in the academy. He was not a first class deputy.
Yes, yes.
So.
So then they bumped from six fifty seven five to sixty four, nine, seventy five.
Bowling went sixty six thousand. Austin went to sixty six.
So that might have been the extra two in there?
So Bowling went to where he needed to be on that scale.
Okay.
So if we were, if we were using sixty thousand as the base salary for a merit first class deputy, he had six years of service or whatever. So he got six thousand dollars. That's where Bowling got sixty six thousand. Now, my next, the next guy, Clausen, which has been here ten years, was capped at sixty six, four, four hundred and twelve dollars more than the deputy below him that has only been here six.
Well, we said capped at fifteen percent.
Right.
And then say.
Right. So that, and that's why I, I tried to get Clausen and Rainey where they kinda needed to be on their, their longevity.
But when you say needed to be, I guess that's.
If they, if the fifteen, if the fifteen percent cap wouldn't have been on there.
Where I'm going is needed to be is depends what you're looking at. Cause I think at the time they were looking at Montgomery County and state police and, and that's all.
Attica.
That comes in play, Attica and River, but you know, then we look at the average for our size county too.
And Attica and Warren County right there, where it was okay. I don't know where.
The average for our size county was a fifty three thousand.
Is what?
Fifty three thousand.
For Warren County?
No, the average for our size county throughout the state. Warren County is sixty five.
There's nine counties, same population as Fountain County and their average is fifty three thousand.
We're kinda, you know, trying to go.
So you're.
Twenty point.
They're underpaid.
They're underpaid, yeah.
So we gotta take it all into consideration, that's what I'm saying.
I understand, that's right.
You know, I'm not saying I.
What I, what I, what I'm saying is, is Rainey and Clausen. As of twenty twenty five should be at seventy thousand dollars. That would have given them their years of service. On top of that sixty thousand dollar mark of the base salary. That's paying them out. For their years of service. Now, Kemp and I, we, we have quite a few more years of service than everybody else does, and Kemp especially. And I. I think we spoke about this in the meeting, I'd have to go back and look, about. Individual deputies' pay. Because of the cap. That we would visit that in budget time. That's why I brought this up. That's why. Appears as well.
So I guess when we're looking at the description, I don't know about you all. But when I look at deputy two, what are they currently making? I guess I need to know the numbers.
Sixty six. Was it sixty six thousand four hundred and twelve dollars? Is that what deputy two and three are making?
Yeah, what they're currently making.
Yeah.
What you show.
Six, so like, chief deputy is what? Chief deputy, seventy six thousand seventy two dollars fifty cents.
Okay.
Detective. Seventy thousand thirty five dollars.
Okay.
So the deputy two is sixty six thousand four hundred and twelve fifty. Deputy three is sixty six thousand four hundred and twelve fifty. Deputy four is sixty six thousand. Deputy six is sixty four thousand. Deputy seven is sixty two thousand. Deputy eight is sixty two thousand. Deputy nine is sixty thousand.
But part of their salaries played out of Fountain Central, is that correct?
The.
S R O.
That, that's Rainey.
That's right.
Deputy two.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's not on the comp of the sixty six, right, it's reimbursed in the county.
So deputy nine is.
So the school resource is, is correct, we just get reimbursed.
So that's.
Deputy nine was sixty thousand. Deputy ten is fifty seven, seven fifty.
So deputy five?
That's.
That's at a jail, jail.
Okay.
It's our deputy eleven.
Deputy eleven, I have fifty five thousand, I have no name on there.
That's Hunter Eads, he's at sixty.
He's at sixty now.
Sixty thousand, because he is a merit.
Oh, that's right, because he has with service, yeah.
Two and a half years, never counted, or even. So we already have the merit, deputy.
So techers still owe us a right now.
Yes, until the first of the year, I guess.
So with this. You're asking us today. For an additional two thousand dollars on top of their. Salary for longevity, am I correct in understanding that?
Hire dates. What I, what I've done is I went off of their years when they were hired. Knowing that their. Two year, their even year mark would be coming up in twenty five.
Right.
And that's the ones that were put down for longevity for twenty five.
So they're coming off of an even number a year, wanting the longevity and the odd number a year to cover their even number a year, got it?
So.
So if someone has six years of service. As of November first, twenty twenty five. You put them in for two thousand dollar increase for twenty twenty five, starting on January one. Technically. Right? If their two years, four years, six years, whatever of service is any time in twenty twenty five, so what if it's November first?
Because I know that we have to advertise it in.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's not fair either, when you talk about.
I understand, I, I understand.
So there isn't really a true, clean, fair way to do it.
So.
I mean, um, I think that's why we tried to take the easy route.
I guess the fair way to do it would be on the hire. But I know it's a lot of.
Then it would be a night, I'm, yeah, salary order is nightmares, we'd have to hesitate.
They, they will, they lost that one.
And that doesn't help their. Sour, who loves recent, yeah, that would be.
If you're rated.
Uh, that just gets, but.
Yeah.
Especially when. It's going in there due.
Yeah.
January, and you're all, you know, all this stuff ever, I.
Come on, Kim, you can do it. I have faith. Love you, Kim, love you.
The ones that are maybe more, if you do a five percent, they're gonna be, they're gonna get a larger percentage than the ones that are double.
Yeah, it's a percentage, that's, yeah, that's, yeah.
So if the hire date's November first, and you don't, you, you don't do it in twenty five, and you decide to do it January twenty sixth. It's almost like the sheriff's salary when they're not on contract, that you have to. You always had to adjust his in the middle of the year to make up the difference for the next six months or whatever. That would be a question, I guess, from November to January, what? Just eat it.
So, I'm just gonna use this as an example. So on the chief deputy, currently at seventy six thousand seventy. Two dollars and fifty cents. And this is really a skewed number, because this wasn't the actual. Adopted budget salary for twenty four.
That's why you can't really.
No, you can't.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's about a seven percent increase.
So this salary was. I believe sixty six one fifty.
No, it's. For the chief.
Six one fifty, yes. And then in February, we raised it to. Seventy.
Six oh seventy two fifty.
So that's. Uh, ten thousand dollar raise, about fifteen percent raise, because we had a cap. Well, yes, so he's at the fifteen hundred, eighty percent raise.
Take that one from seventy six oh seventy two to the requested eight one, eighty one thousand nine seventy six. That's a seven point seven percent raise, because the two thousand is in there on top of the five percent.
But you're saying that because you waited. The cap.
Oh, yeah.
And same thing.
So if we were to. We hit the longevity. Yeah, for everybody, then. At, at the rate everybody else got to two thousand for every other year of service, I've been at a two thousand starting off, and then February twenty one. And I'm coming on to my full team here, that's another even year. But forget about me. Can, can we get this, can we get these other guys where they?
Well, the maximum is two thousand, and then on longevity, and you've got thirty years here, you get two thousand, right?
Well, that's, and that's what the minutes rate, that's what the minutes rate, that was.
Or, or longevity.
Right.
Yeah, any county employee over twenty five years.
And that's why we're saying. Sheriff, that means, and that will get two thousand every year, just like the other employees.
No way, it doesn't say every year or every other year?
Every year.
And if they have twenty, and which is only, yeah, fuck him, we get like, two thousand longevity on years, plus whatever we decide on a raise.
Let's go there, what do we wanna do on a raise? I mean, what do we think on that, like, ignore the two thousand right now, yeah, like.
Well, we need five, we need five on the commanders, I think.
What do we do on the highway? Where we already gave them a rate.
Yeah.
That was lower, it was, it was three or five.
Three percent.
I think it's two.
Two, it's two.
Yeah, we all gave the highway, two percent after giving them that.
I think we need to either look at increasing on, or, you know, making that, kind of, because that's kind of similar to what we. We looked at those similar, so I think we need to be fair between both departments. You know, bump the highway back up, um, the place to share the.
Right, or like we did the. Jaws.
I know, I've just, yeah.
You mean the highway?
Highway was competitive. They were competitive, weren't they?
The highway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we, that's what we do.
Yeah, so you can tell me if it's better.
Very competitive, so.
Right, so doing longevity, the cost of living, right? I mean. You, you're looking at three percent or less. On everybody, pretty much. On the list, except for Rainey and Clausen, and that's. I'd ask for the seventy thousand on them, because I swear it would be a ten years. From sixty thousand in base salary.
I'd, I'd say at least five. I mean, crap on the highway, but they're not gonna be shot at. Yes, we're.
That's true. I agree with that.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Really good, so.
Be shot, okay.
That's true.
Alright, everybody wants to just five?
Unless the road's not getting rated, it might be a different story, I.
Well, I understand, but. And. Andrew gets a thousand for. It was minutes that.
Oh, instructor paying.
Yeah, instructor.
Yeah, um. So TJ, TJ. TJ Powell also is a general instructor and a emergency vehicle operation instructor.
That, I saw, okay.
Which is, which is a special.
Maximum of two specialties you get on here, instructors, so it's one thousand. So.
The one that has two.
So one, you get one and one, okay.
Yeah.
Instead of max two thousand, so.
Kemp has two. Bowling has one. Powell has two.
Wait a minute.
But I think that's it.
Well, maximum two instructors, that's all that we, we agreed on this. Maximum.
Maximum two thousand dollars, I thought, maximum of two specialties, per.
It says instructor, maximum two on here. Got written. Two instructors.
Okay.
I'm looking, I'm a scouring.
Didn't we just add, did he just get trained now? I mean, is he just now starting training in Powell, or?
Oh, no, he's certified.
Did he get paid that this year?
I'm pretty sure.
I think.
Yeah.
So, it was for, for Tyler and for. TJ's. When they got their instructor shirt, I called the PM and said, hey, we need to put these guys on that. Instructor.
Pretty sure we paid it. We didn't see, we didn't get any money. Yeah, because we had to do a. Additional. Because we didn't have anything, but. I, I think.
It got from all those, you're gonna be now.
Yeah, do follow your own power, right?
Two power, one.
Two, two power. One goal is the previous again.
I guess, I mean, it's, we're not. The reason why I done this is so we have it all in-house training. We have to have HEBO every year, which is vehicle operations. We have to have firearms every year. You have to get your general instructor, and then you have, those are called specialty skills. Firearms, HEBO, defensive tactics, those are all mandated trainings that we have to have every year. I can go hire it out, I can have a guest instructor come in and instruct it all, we're still gonna, we're gonna pay more money.
Just paying your own people.
This is, this is the reason why I had the incentive for instructor pay, is so we can be self-sufficient. Not have to go to the academy or not.
So you think it's, should have said two instructions versus two instructors?
I'd have to look at my pay form, but I know what I meant. Maybe I didn't propose it right, but.
Okay.
And not two, two maximum pay.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, a guy could. He can be an instructor in four or five different things, but he's only getting paid for two of those.
Correct.
And he'll either get paid per range.
A thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I, I just.
For plus, so you got.
Two thousand.
Well, you've got these, they raised for the instructor, you got, yeah, it's two thousand percent of things. Twenty five years, and then five percent.
Can we make it more difficult?
Ken, bowling, Powell, which is a thousand each, so it adds a little five thousand for in-house training and instruction. And a five percent increase for all debits, including proud, yeah.
Yes. And now, techer. Is he at fifty seven, seven fifty?
Until January one, yes.
He's going to six.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So that'll need a little. It's sixty. Protector, well, he'll go to sixty.
Well, he, he. The way I had it figured, he's gonna hit his second year at one to five, so he would have been at sixty two. At his anniversary date, that's why it was advertised like that.
Now, deputy eleven is sixty plus a five percent raise.
Yeah.
It's five percent across the board.
Cause he's getting sixty now, right, the techer is only getting fifty seven.
So he would go to sixty two.
Yes, the techer is getting fifty seven, seven fifty right now, okay, so he's gonna give.
He did, when he.
They have fifty seven, seven fifty, that right?
So how about sixty six?
When we did these, he was in the academy, I believe, that's why he was still road. He had to make the sixty.
Basically, so actually, the five percent would be sixty three seventy five.
Sixty thousand six thirty seven.
I got, yeah, I got sixty thousand six thirty seven five, fifty cents.
So. Seven, but I think I did seven five, so seven fifty times one point five percent. Could be sixty six thirty eight, so that means maybe I have to go to sixty six thirty.
Where she at? She's under the.
There's my question. Based off the lowest paid. Manus deputy, or is it like?
So it's paid merit deputy.
Merit deputy is. Bill later.
He's a merit deputy, but he's not a road, and I don't know if it specifies road, we, we, we've talked about this before.
I thought it was only merit, so.
Okay, but are you giving him a five percent raise?
So I think we're. We were gonna come back to.
Coming back to him, yes.
On us out, so.
And, and he's sixty now, so.
So he's gonna be.
And we're gonna.
He's under the. Oh, he's under the court.
All the instructor really ain't paid for each of the certain bands.
Up to two.
Up to two.
Up to two, yes, seven two, yes.
They can teach tens.
Court bailiff.
And I, I got that off.
Yeah, we're coming back to.
Look, every camp as well, they only pay up to specialties, seven two, yeah, so. Look at every camp as well, they only pay up to two specialties, seven two, yeah, so.
Yeah, and we do six thousand.
There's some guys have four volume of specials.
Sure, incentive pay that, and that's.
Okay, that's where that comes out of.
Right, incentive pay is separate. It comes out of one, one fifty-two.
About a safe year.
Yeah. It was really the issue.
Why can't it just be, but it's our sound. So we're gonna add one oh one fifty-two on here, that's gonna be the essential pay.
Under sheriff.
For the instruction.
So then the lowest paid debt is gonna be.
Seven ten.
Yes.
No, you know, we need six thousand. With that six thousand this year, they said they're telling.
Are we all getting slapped happy? Who's on, who's on first?
He gets two thousand incentive, cause it's over twenty-five.
Right, every year I got that. He gets five percent plus two thousand, Kim does, but then he also.
Kim gets two thousand. Powell gets a thousand, Powell gets two thousand and bowling gets a thousand, so six.
Okay.
You have them so far.
So, we have all deputies in. Administrator records is, uh, what has been the same as the courthouse deputies. So it would go to forty thousand. Cause you take part of that out of the ass different part, so.
Okay, thank you. Is your brain hurting now?
So Andrew, we covered everybody then?
I, yeah.
Do we have to do for bailiff?
We did, we were house security officer, he goes from sixty.
But do we wanna bump that overtime, just?
How much has it been so far this year, Colin? The warehouse security officer overtime.
We've had to pay more for these meetings.
Yeah, so I'm asking how much we paid so far this year.
We get a five percent.
He doesn't want a halftime too, you know what I mean?
Not as much now, he gets paid out more for overtime now.
It's under jail on that.
He would have had a two thousand.
Yeah.
January first, twenty-five. So.
Yeah, to the commissioners.
Yeah, maybe, okay, so we'll leave it at ten thousand.
On the safety officer overtime, one oh eight two one. Yeah, I had moved to a commissioner.
I'm leaving it at ten, cause we spent three thousand and.
Where did we put the sheriff?
Yeah, in county general.
Elected official, it's under sheriff.
Yeah.
First page at the bottom.
And social security and the sheriff's retirement, so we moved. Three hundred thousand from public safety to.
So where, where's he at? The one oh seven five sixty-nine is what he's at now, or what he requests for?
I think that was.
Elected official, he's at, yeah. So it's that plus. That's not correct, he's at one oh two.
So that is five percent, the one oh seven is probably the five percent I'm gonna guess.
Let me guess into.
One oh seven, five, six, yeah, so it's five percent, same as. Evening, Al, Sandberg.
I like so. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Okay, radio dispatch.
Come on down, Dana, you're the next contestant, thank you, Andrew. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You like being an anonymous league from this? Didn't know what you written yourself into. You do?
You did neither two years.
Like almost four years, yeah.
Yeah, I think they got it figured out, yeah, the extra three operators and the extra one CTO.
Radio dispatch, we have two, we divided that out to two radio operators and two. Right now, then, the lead operator, forty-six, one oh. For the request, we'll leave. Forty-seven, nine.
Thank you.
Five percent would be forty-eight, four oh eight. What we have, what the average is.
It's, we're right in there, it's a crossword, I didn't do that one. But I think it's.
You look here.
We're right about in the middle, so.
Radio dispatcher.
Yeah, radio dispatcher, yeah. Brown County seventy-six thousand, Wyatt, so that's a little weird. But the rest of it wasn't. Yeah, there must be, oh no, I'm sorry. Thirty-six thousand, I get my glasses.
It kinda makes it hard.
Need to look at the. Population of the two counties.
They're all like thirty-six to fifty, I mean, the one is a range of forty-five thousand to fifty-six.
And not all those work twelve hours, but they will also have eight hour days since they work with me.
Is that based off of?
So if you took two counties, the same size, and you divide.
I mean, I have no idea if some of these counties do another county, cause like. Warren County reports zero, you know, so. And we, we, I don't know.
Well, I think we're only, the only one, I think.
We're not all. I think it's better.
Forty-eight, four oh eight is a five percent?
Yes.
My CTOs are trained. They do a lot of like work for the training, they have extra training to do to be a CTO. CTOs, certified, uh, training operator. Sorry. It's all good.
I feel their, I feel like their position is equally as important as the sheriff's department. They take, you know, yeah, I think they, they've got people's lives in their hands, like the ambulance and, yeah.
We are their first, first point of action.
So the lead operators, the ninety-six, eight, one, seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then what are the radio operators? Are they all going to be the same? No, they're not all the same.
I have five, um, operators, radio operators.
So it'll be ninety-five, seven, seven, five.
Okay.
Ninety, ninety-five, seven, seven, five, for the two radio operators. Ninety-six, eight, one, seven. Radio operators, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Ninety-nine, five, seven, seven, five. And you got the lead, nine, six, eight, one, seven.
Six, eight, one, seven?
Yeah. Oh, okay, so that accident report you're gonna figure out. Twelve twenty-two, you're, you're gonna have to figure out the social security. Okay, right here.
Twelve twenty-two.
Forty-eight, seven, forty-one, sixty.
That's what the director's making?
No.
Yeah.
Fifty-six.
Oh, we had it wrong one, oh, sorry.
Five percent. Was this year in February? I think it was in February.
So the fifty-six, seven, seventy-two is current, as of today, thank you. Fifty-six, seven, seventy-two is. Six, eleven, round out. Fifty-nine. And then the deputy director is at forty-nine, seven, fifteen, as of today.
Forty-nine, seven, fifteen.
Yeah.
Now, if she's able to have overtime.
Fifty-two, two, oh, one. So we decided to leave overtime at ten?
When we sign.
Five percent.
Fifty-nine, six, one, oh.
So it'd be sixty-two, five, ninety-two.
So what'd you say the director raised with five percent? How much was that, I'm sorry?
I get sixty-two, five, any point you got.
No, I just, I didn't hear, I think it, I mean.
Okay, I need a recap, I guess, current, right now. They're, Dana's getting paid fifty-six, seven, seventy-two. Thank you.
That's what it was, give or raise.
Right, right.
Year, to fit from fifty-six to fifty-nine. Deputy director.
Sixty-two, five, nine.
Five percent on that too, then.
So what is the deputy director gonna get paid then? Okay, I'm gonna make sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, then now reverting E nine-one dispatch, I'll need to figure out social security and retirement. So how many operators are there?
Three.
They are making forty-three, forty-four. Forty-five, six, oh, six. When everybody agrees to.
There's three. One thirty-six, eight, one. So what does that come out to? I got one thirty-six, eight, eighteen. Yep, that's what I got.
Okay.
The GIS, GIS mapping. Thank you, Dana.
I asked for fifteen percent to go to sixty-five.
Correct, she made sixty-five thousand, the key deputy is seven, everything is seven, six. Or you put him to. She does accounts, I need from the nine-one board side of them.
Well, several training opportunities that I have to be able to train in-house instead of go out of house and spend that money there. Also with, on my budget, and I do apologize that I messed up on that, I was very confused first year doing it. With minus one CTO, that's a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars putting back in the bank. And then fixing the three operators that I had over. Was a little over three hundred, so. That's the reason why I was asking for a little bit more for myself, we didn't have in two counties. That's the reason why I was asking for a little bit more for myself, we didn't have in two counties. And the surrounding counties as well with my operators and my CTOs, it's not just Warren, it's not county, it's Park, it's Vermont, both Vermontians, it's Benton, it's Montgomery County. Typical new county.
Sheriff of Birmingham, it's a thousand dollar training program. A member operator, gotta certify something.
I believe.
Which I am.
Why did you put her salary out?
What did you?
What was her salary with the five percent?
Sure.
Sixty-two, five, ninety-one.
Sixty-two, five.
Five ninety-one.
Four, five, nine, three, I mean, two thousand, I think, thirty.
Four, one, five.
Yeah.
In the book, it says fifty-eight, two, two, six, but I don't know if that's right.
Fifty-six, seven, and two.
Raised it.
Raised it to.
Fifty-seven, twenty-four, right?
Yeah. And that.
Raised it to twenty-four.
Just one.
We got one for January, and then we raised it in the middle of the year.
I did one in February, I only got, when I, when I came in, it was only one, I only got five percent.
We did a race.
But prior to me.
Raced it on January one, and then when you came, you raced it again.
So.
There was actually two races at that point.
So, so she's at sixty-two?
You got one raise, with the, with the position, you got two raises.
Yes.
Yes, they got that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So she's current, so twenty-twenty-four salary is what? Fifty-nine, six, ten?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we get, sixty-two, now, now we're working on two positions, but one.
We could raise it to seven and a half.
Oh, good.
And then we get our sixty-four thousand, eighty-one dollars. Throwing it up.
And begin, uh, twenty-three, it was fifty-four thousand, sixty-eight dollars appropriated.
Well, it says seven and a half.
If there's not take thirty, sixty, you know.
Oh, maybe one.
That's based off of the sixty.
All other duties itself.
She's fifty-nine, six, ten.
It's a transfer.
Times point oh seven five.
Which.
Plus fifty-nine, six, ten.
Yeah.
Sixty-four, eighty-one dollars.
And Dana, what's your longevity?
My longevity?
I mean, not how old are you, but.
I'm not telling you that birthday.
Happy birthday.
My longevity, uh. Or like, yeah, yeah. I've been here eight years, so it's that longevity. I don't know, I'm talking, I got you, I got you, seven fifty, seven fifty.
That's fifteen.
Kelly figured, like, seven and a half was sixty-four. Two, eight, zero, but what if you put her like sixty-five, then, you've been a private many percent. I'm starting out.
You guys?
Shannon's sixty-five, five, two, eighty-eight. I'm going to.
Much less.
How much did she ask for? I'm sorry. Thinking.
Sixty-five, two, eighty-eight, that's around the bar.
That's reasonable.
I, yeah.
I think they wanna do her. She good. She doing a lot here, guys.
Well, she spoke on our behalf a lot to Warren County. And that's a situation that we've. That has yet to be rectified.
Yeah, that's right.
Unfortunately. And that's not because of Dana by any means at all.
Okay, so what?
I say we just flat sixty-five and. Um, I, I think that's fair. Don't ask me that percent, cuz my brains can't think that much right now.
Thank you.
Anything else? We're now off there, buddy, here. Okay.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, guys.
My goodness.
Okay.
Okay, so now, let's look at reassess. Uh, the GPS, G I S mapping is, uh, lenders. In the board's favor more than the.
That's a hard experience.
Yes, for the first, I mean, some. There is a name I don't know if you do that, I don't think, like, she does.
Is that the beacon program?
Hey. Hey. God, that's one for. Eight hundred and sixty-five, and one's eight, or, or even.
Fifty.
Seventy. Well, by this, you will have a brain.
Maybe we need to.
I struggle.
What's that?
I was just. Struggle comparing jobs.
I struggle comparing positions, like, very hard to achieve that, I mean, it's, every job's important in my book.
Yeah.
And they, and they shouldn't, I know different positions get paid a different amount, but. I don't care if you're just sweeping floors, that job's important, too, you know, I don't like it when they compare, that's up to different ones, I struggle enough.
I think, don't like being, hopefully.
Yeah, same.
We, we should not, we should do it the way school does, you don't do this and that.
I'm gonna say that, a lot of employees have come to me, and said they think you guys have been bullied into, we have, yeah, and they're very mad, and some are looking for other jobs.
You don't do this.
I don't know.
I think we have to.
I'm just saying.
We have to, yeah.
I know, that adds to school, it's buying, and it's too bad, we, salaries ought to be discussed.
In private, in an executive session.
There's much later to say.
They, to do that, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that would. Well, that's.
People, people that. You know, you know, people that like confrontation, have no problem going back and forth with us, or even, some of them doesn't, that maybe virtually are.
And here's the difference.
That's tough.
And here's, here, and here's the difference, too. She's elected by the people. And the people wanna make sure that the stuff is done correct. And not saying that, that, they're not, others are not as important, but this position as an auditor encompasses this entire courthouse.
Yeah.
And then also, she's been here like thirty-five years, why is her, instead of making same as somebody coming out the street?
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I struggle.
And I really wanna keep her, cuz that's a lot of knowledge I need.
It's enough for everybody.
Everybody, alright. Yep.
You have to answer all the public information. Act.
And I've worked, I've worked in the judge.
State, state, board of accounts.
And now where I work, same exact money, we, I make the same exact as somebody coming out the street. And it's insane.
But you could see, yes, it's been, I know.
Been out here.
I know. I, I agree.
No, no.
Oh, yeah.
This, we're still on the easy corner, okay, so, um.
Not easy.
Let's start, we've still got some discuss, and I highlighted auditor first step. And I highlighted that because. Everything new. And Colleen's got thirty years, how many years?
Like thirty minutes, I'll be finishing up my thirty-fourth year.
Thirty-fourth year.
Okay.
And Kim's gonna need help. And I think.
Agreed.
That Colleen, she's gonna stay and, and help Kim, that she needs to be paid.
Yeah.
For her, and then if she leaves, then we revert back to this.
To that, yeah.
But I think we need to pay Colleen for her.
And we've got room to adjust the auditor and for a stipend pay, because they're in county general, and we have room to do it, right?
Yeah, so you've got so many down first deputy, pardon me, you've got Colleen down first deputy. Well, I just highlight one, cuz I don't know which one.
But, okay, okay, I just wanna make sure before we do this.
So, you know, I don't know what charity position you're gonna be, gonna have Colleen in, but, um. And you can tell us how we're gonna do that.
So we need to increase those ones.
Mm-hmm, so I think they need to go to seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say the check deputy, but. We made that check deputy.
Exactly, that's what seven and a half would get, the first deputy.
I mean, Colleen's got an elbow roll, and maybe.
With what we're.
Yeah, that's more in line.
Queen deputy, yeah.
Okay, we have a suggestion.
Okay.
With, with what we've done tonight with other people, and the increases we've given throughout the weeks. I think we should look at doing the auditor, not the ten percent that was requested.
Yeah.
Which would be fifty-three, two, sixty, like.
Fifty-three, two, sixty.
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
The first deputy, we thought seven and a half for Colleen's experience, unless somebody wants to do something different, this is just a, this is a suggestion. Which would put it at forty-one, forty-two.
Forty thousand, forty-two.
Mm-hmm. But, but see, the thing is, is that's not much above.
Now, see, I.
Yeah, you're thinking more like forty-five.
Mm-hmm, so.
That's what you're thinking, for her, the experience that we're gonna need.
Forty-five, I think, forty-five. Uh, Steve. It'd be okay to have.
Forty-five?
You really don't wanna lose you, to your commitments.
Yeah.
Four-year commitment, but we want that.
Four-year, right.
But that is, we understand that.
Three and a half years.
Yeah, Colleen leaves, and it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
Yeah, I think you need to remember that, if you have to hire, then it's not of the same rate. Yeah.
And we said, the first, or, uh, the auditor was fifty-three, one?
Two, seven.
Sixty.
That's what they requested, yeah. Fifty, or whatever.
Yeah, whatever, I mean, that's just a, yeah.
You guys can. Throw in your thoughts.
And, I mean, look, I mean, I think you can take that. I'm gonna have.
You can, you can make it a five, fifty-five, and I'm.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, I'm kind of that, too.
Yeah.
So then.
We just sign on the T I S mapping.
No.
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 We're, we're going.
We got sidetracked.
Yeah, certainly, one, but, don't get all.
Most of them, we had that.
Okay.
We got a question. Uh, the treasurer makes forty-seven. Okay, the new person coming in, you got now for forty-seven.
Yes.
And my question was, the recorder, you have your forty-seven. I don't know, is that, is that fair?
I think most counties, the reporter and the treasurer paid about the same, because. Treasurers really. And I'm gonna get blasted for this, but the treasurer really busy twice a year, tax pay. And you, you verify, when they're not collecting taxes, you, you're not busy.
No, yeah.
And, and now, reporter has, they report needs all the time, that, uh, you know.
When you look at the averages of the other counties, I can, I look at the treasurer and the reporter, they're either the same, or the reporter's a little less. So I think that's common.
I think you have. But. Or, and the clerk convention, if I know that the auditors convention, they always talk about, when, when the clerk's want out of office, they say, well, the secretary's hiring, getting a reporter, yeah.
I think that's the highest, and then the lower, there's a sixty, there's a sixty.
So it's the two of them.
And then, I bet fifty-five would be right in the middle.
So, semi-retired.
So we're gonna leave that, so we're gonna keep that.
All right. We have nothing.
Right, so this is.
Hey, thanks on page two, the.
Fifty-eight.
I do.
Fifty-eight and forty-seven.
The read one question is because, I got a text today. About what they do, uh, in, uh, in the annuals department, I'm talking.
Page two.
Page two.
Um, work on that.
Going back to corner, and, and I just thought, eight hundred bucks, anybody's gonna wanna go out in the corner, doubt, anybody wanna do that? And then, uh, take somebody down from the tree, or pick up somebody that passed away, and didn't have, or whatever, just think about it, I don't know, for eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred dollars, where are you getting that?
Well, the reason why it was ten, and, and.
Went eleven thousand.
Yes, yeah, and, and that's only, what is that, just originally, uh. Uh, what is it, seventy bucks, seventy-eight, eighty bucks? I just thought we're not ready to move on to the reports.
That probably did.
We got a guy retiring, too, right?
Yeah, one day, first.
Eight hundred and sixty dollars, he's asking for eleven, eight, sixty.
Yeah. But it's. I don't know, I just thought, what if they ask for, I thought it was worth that, that's it.
Okay.
Well.
You know, we didn't see it compared to most, cuz it was the first man there, and it was gonna be a new person.
Mm-hmm. Anything else on page two?
I do. I, I can pick up somebody like that for one thousand dollars.
Go drop him off, go pick up, I, I, I went to school.
Well, you don't, the problem is you don't know how busy it is, it can be pretty slow, or it can be, I mean, that's where it's hard, yeah, it's hard to say.
Good answer.
He is going to be almost the same job as that E M T guy out there on the highway. Yes.
Corner.
You will just go ahead and follow him up.
Well, currently, our coroner does do that.
Yeah, it's a city's with the E M T.
I don't care. I don't care.
So, then.
So I'm looking at, sorry.
I love Josh.
Okay, that is great. Uh, I had, I didn't want to jab anything, it was.
What did you, you didn't tell me now, you didn't give me an answer. You, did you give me money, no? Too bad.
You, I mean, I didn't hear anybody else.
Yes, because it is not a corner.
The new person.
Yeah.
Let's see, let's see how many. Runs they have, or how many calls this new person has next year, and then next year.
Be super busy, either regular, slow, it's hard.
If they only have.
Say what's.
Eleven deaths that they investigate, that's eight thousand dollars, um.
Who's running K level?
Care, K level, that's.
Harry's wife, Harry's wife.
Um.
Okay, longevity, um.
They got me now.
Oh.
I think that would be definitely.
Yeah. On a schedule, yeah.
And.
Highways out.
Okay, but we need to, at the resolutions gotta be adjusted, because if, if state two gets that. And I'll give a tailor to have him, you can give me, email me a copy of the last one we did, and I'll have Taylor update that. And then, well, that, that should be. Should be enough, and you can figure that, you know, and, and, you can just suggest that. Okay.
I think it's gonna go down a little bit.
Yeah.
I do, so, honestly, see how many makes that, yeah.
We got rid of it once, too.
You check it out once, and I got you, you know.
I was thinking, yeah.
So, okay, courthouse, we've done that. Yeah, we once were all day, except, D A L S, and police probably have to take that. Uh, next Monday.
Yeah, we know.
Or we get the contract, we can. Kind of halfway agree what it's gonna be.
And we do have to look at that, correct?
Hmm.
Okay.
That.
Perfect, before they sign it.
Before you leave, now give quiet. Sit down, find someone out. Circuit court, circuit court yesterday.
Yes.
Heard a comment, somebody on the landfill makes fifty thousand, and we got a court reporter, did you hear that yesterday? And we got a court reporter that's been here about a year. Uh, and making, uh, what was it, forty-nine dollars?
Yeah, been here as long as Colleen's been here.
I'm just, right.
I know, I know, but, no, the landfill makes fifty thousand, that's, that's just, that's what I heard.
She was comparing recycling, but you know, janitors make true money, he says, yeah, it doesn't require skill, it's a gross job.
Please be going out and collect.
No, it's a gross job.
I mean, when they come in here, they're sweating, or breathing, or, you know.
They're doing a crappy job, so.
They do that.
You know.
They just want to pick up all the grass.
Right. Right, oh, that's, and I agree. That, but that's the given tape.
But but that's why we got a salary schedule too, and I think our court reporter, reporters making.
And they they should make it. Like you can't. Yes.
I didn't do my own trash, it's cool. I washed my own water.
I did the erasers as a kid.
My. I feel like that's why I did.
So.
Everybody went in there, John, can you get out of the classroom?
Yeah. You know. You're taking care of the accident report. Okay.
That's something we never.
We're on page five.
We add record.
No, no, that that's coming up.
Oh, yeah, that's still highlighted.
On page six.
We're on page six. We're on page six now, ladies and gentlemen.
You do set pay.
You don't do anything.
Have pay.
What we, I mean, we.
They currently make nineteen thousand four sixty five, is that correct, or is that what they requested?
Uh, that's current and that's.
Oh. I struggle with this one, cause I.
I'd be forty five.
I was hoping to have two new ones.
Yes.
But. There's gonna be a lot of stuff, I think they gotta, they're gonna put a lot of timing.
Yes.
So I. That's conflicting on. Pay scale, I think.
They're asking for twenty thousand three forty one.
That was what Colleen put in, right?
Yeah, so.
That was what Colleen requested.
Okay.
They're making right now nineteen thousand four twenty five.
Four twenty five or four sixty?
I got four twenty five, okay.
This is. Nineteen four hundred five.
I'm sorry. All right, easy job. Plus I get that, that's.
Yes, they can get.
Yes, I'm scared.
Um.
Someone asked me one time why the council wasn't getting health insurance.
I wanna.
So I knew it's. Yeah, me too.
I have.
Um, I mean.
Don't like data.
Aaron told me he was fine, you know. If they do next year, but they're gonna be.
They're gonna be swamped.
Swamped.
Like, as are we.
Yeah. Um.
I put in a hundred percent increase.
Three, okay, I did five, I got twenty three ninety six. Each, um, during.
I think that the negativity that we would receive for such a simple raise.
I don't think we can win.
Would be very detrimental. And I also think the same thing for this council's pay. I would prefer me not to take a raise.
I don't think.
You know, I just don't feel comfortable. I mean. Guess it's not a vote, it's just a statement.
No.
You know, so.
You guys are. I was, I was doing. I.
Okay. We don't do it for the money.
Oh, I don't need a raise, um. Okay, so every time teacher contract came around.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about tho- those people who drive in, like. Attica and Jess and.
Yeah, that.
You know, you're spending a lot of time, you know, on the road with somebody that.
It's two blocks away.
Yeah, exactly. It's all downhill to where I live.
It hurts. I like, I will. And Dale doesn't either.
Yeah.
Full of same body. Yeah, I'm I'm all right with that.
I am, okay. So leave commissioners and council, who's saying for next year?
And then if, and then if people come in and pound their chops and, hey.
Perfect, yep.
Yeah, we're working for you.
Yep. That's.
I highlighted the contract clause and clause, I, you know.
I handed some information out. It's a lot of information, but. I can.
You can summarize.
I can summarize it if you will. So I spoke with, uh. Dr. Broderick, who's the veterinarian for countryside vet and president of the board of Paulson Claws. I said that the council, I believe, was looking for clarification. If we, if they provide services to Fountain County. What is Fountain County? Who is Fountain County? And in her response, she said that for the last eleven years that. I forget what it says in in the statement, that there's never been an issue, nobody ever needed clarification. This is the first time she's ever heard of the need for clarification. That it was for rural, rural Fountain County. Not really serving any of the towns, cities, unincorporated areas. And then my other comment was in regards to, we could use information on. Um, how the level of services have increased over the last three years or decreased. And any cost associated with those, what the justification is, you know, for those costs. And, uh. Her treasurer is out on medical. Uh, at Paulson Claws and said it may, that she's probably gonna have to deal with deep dive herself to come up with that. I gave her. Colleen's contact information, yours deadly, and, uh. That was just really it. Uh, she said cost of business has gone up. Things of that nature. So it's a pretty vague response, cause she didn't.
Yeah.
Do a deep dive.
They all know costs gone up, but. I guess my biggest concern is how much. Do they do in the rural areas? I would think most of the service would be in the incorporated towns and the incorporated towns.
I don't know. I don't know how Paulson Claws work. Can you, do they have a number you can call? If anybody can call and pick up with. So if if my goal is rural residents, are they gonna come out?
They will, because you live in the country.
They'll ask you.
And those girls, some of them call and they won't do.
Yeah, I know, I've had, people tell me. Town, Covington, they call and they say, we don't service you.
But but if they called you Jim and they're full. They can't serve you if they don't have capacity.
That's understood, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's where they're at now, they're at capacity.
And that's.
And so people are asking more questions, what, what are you doing? And I think they do go out and make the runs. And do what they can, do an assessment, but they. There's all the, all the facilities around us are full.
I get.
Yeah.
Are they, are they no, no kill sildes or?
Mm hmm. She said last week they don't have to do if it's what helped or, you know, if there's a dog bite or something. Or like court order, they don't.
There's a legal precedent that they have to follow.
Right.
Yeah.
They don't, just because they're full.
And so we're paying a forty two thousand con- dollar contract. Attica is paying a forty two thousand dollar contract. Their taxes on their property goes to pay for this service.
That's where I.
And we're paying for it as well, so.
The the Covington residents, the Petersburg residents, the Malat residents, their taxes are called. Funding.
Yes.
Them to cover rural, but then they get.
But they're not getting service.
Yes, that's.
Right, and then Attica's paying twice really because.
Technically, yeah.
You know.
And that's, that's tough.
And that's. Our decision is putting money there, cause that's gonna be commissioner's decision on signing the contract.
Yeah.
But, um.
But I give a problem this year.
Yes.
Yeah, we're behind.
I don't.
But they contacted me that they were going to come. To the November meeting and. They needed time to come up with all the, and maybe they contacted you, you talked to them, but I did get a, an email just said. Um. When they, when did I want those figures? It was gonna take a while. And I said, well, and you can't do the November. Well, we were meeting on that too, right?
Yeah.
Fall, fall come out. What's falls, falls come out? Uh, commissioner's house, see that? Page six, your sheet there. I've got it highlighted, did you know? God.
And and they do. Offset, um. The county's cost, cause they do raise private donations. And the community foundation processes some of those private donations. We've had people leave a bequest in their will and.
Yeah.
Twenty percent of the estate, eleven thousand went to Paulson Claws for a new roof. And so. There are others who assist. Us in providing that service to them. We, we can't say that we're the. The ones that providing the entire service and doing all the public good, because, uh, half of it comes from. People who pay fees for services, people who make private donations. And so what, what the contracts do is about fifty percent or less. Of their operational cost. So we're not. Totally, you know. We're not the reason that there's.
It's, yeah, it's the services needed.
Yeah.
Why?
And they get fired.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, I think so. I think it's kinda like the mental health and. In some ways, it's. This is a bad comparison, but like the fire departments, they provide services, you know, and.
So.
Communities.
Statuary Department, Breach County, have some kind of a.
Wes, how would you say in not certain towns?
I know, that that's. If it's a statute, then it would, I would think it had to be coverage for the whole county.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a health related. You know, department, like you gotta take care of your critters in your county, you can't just let.
Could you check on that? And then.
We have Congress, so I can ask that.
Yeah, that's right. Support the market.
Yep.
Or leaving from here. Okay, so you can check on that, that can always be adjusted. Next Monday. Our street bridge, we could carry out. Um, okay, page seven, uh, yesterday, eight, and so we are on the sixth night. Does it, we're not doing the wind, right? Um. On back. Right, I mean, that's what. Aaron and K W F, and they may not be two in there, Jake, they're worried, but they said they not wanna go that way. Um, custodian. I think we're gonna be having custodian then and Jake.
Having a term, then beginning at December.
Oh.
What is that pay?
What's it? Pay. Yeah, I got. What's that, there?
It's a fifty nine eleven February.
Seven, yeah, okay. Custodian right now gets twenty seven thousand eight hundred sixty five dollars for twenty eight hours old. And then assistant. Gets that, right? They're both, assistant gets twenty eight thousand five ninety two for twenty eight to twenty nine hours. They both get nineteen dollars and forty cents an hour.
How much? Nineteen dollars and?
Forty.
Nineteen forty.
Fourteen.
Oh, fourteen.
Who's the assistant?
Assistant.
Is it?
Anne Abbott.
Isn't it?
Okay. Well.
Okay.
Five percent would be to twenty dollars an hour.
And, I know Annie's new, right?
Yes.
She's just.
And janitor, I mean, I tell you. We better just leave it the way it is. Or.
Either.
I say we just keep the same, yeah.
That's the same in part time, are we, do we have any part time?
We haven't used it for a while.
Okay.
I mean.
Um, even, um, just.
We, yes, because if somebody get hurt or bitten or. We have Houston. I think breaks, that's out for surgery or something.
Yeah, that's often, yeah. Can always transfer. I mean. The council here can always transfer, I think. So, I mean, so where do we? Uh, okay, so those are okay. We, and hell. And plus, but say, here we then, highway. I know, backup. Backup is, uh. Use that to pay. The deputies in the auditors' office for the extra work they do. Started that. There were four years ago.
Where does that come out of?
Page nine, that comes out of the money collected on the backups. Page two is about two thirty to lay down.
We have. Transferred now, just for. For instance.
And it can only be, that money can only be.
Part.
For. Um. Anything, the, the, the backup, obviously, they're for the. Their, their job that they do, and it's not for, I don't believe it, and you know, say.
Do you recommend to give increased calling? Yeah.
But it is. I remember. Yeah, where they all were here in every. What was it before? It's been a thousand.
It's just a thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Everybody, okay, do that. Um. Or begin standard, I don't know. I highlighted those, but. Thirty five fourteen, is that?
Oh. That's what he pays, it's kinda like a supplemental, I would be proud. Support, um. You know, he gives that to the. Somebody, and then he works until then.
Okay. So that's thirty five fourteen for this year.
And that's a seven, a six percent, I think.
Yeah.
Seventy two five, like, yeah.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
It'd be six ninety.
Thirty six ninety.
If that.
Or with every time with this year, can you have?
Oh.
A part time thirty one fifty this year.
She's. One of them should, yeah, I think this is the one who switched it.
Uh, they went over this year.
And we had to switch it to the fraction.
So, let's leave the, the, because that, that's. When they apply, that's not out in general, I think, so. It gets, they form their plans. Okay, there's E nine, and one of them is a darn, they're hurting you, okay, assessment fund. We.
Looks great.
Yeah. Hey, yeah. It's. Happy to, she gets forty-three thousand two oh one this year. Parents.
They're forty.
Been there almost forty years.
Five percent fits it at forty-five, three sixty-one?
What did they request?
What they request.
Um.
She works full-time?
Yes.
Forty-five, three sixty.
That's five percent.
That's a five percent, so, yes. So forty-five, three sixty. They're now okay with that.
Yeah.
And we've covered everything.
I found we put here twenty-two dollars, three four, with thirty-one dollars, that's it. So we wanna make that twenty-five thousand and then the seventeen sixty-two, twenty, that we mentioned. Be clear, make it easier for bookkeeping, wouldn't it? And make it easier for bookkeeping and social security is all on one, yeah.
You know, that rule that it comes out, the social security comes out, the grant's paid out of.
Mm-hmm.
The fund that's paid out of.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
The prosecutor gets four, or a fraction, they need some anxiety of social security, that's all that. It's been hit in that in general. So.
Agreed.
That makes sense, keep it together.
Sorry.
Jim says no.
I know, and that's, that was the. Doctor Sherman, I never got along, because he bought that three dollars in that time, it's paid out.
I remember that. You got into it with him at a meeting, he sat right over there in the second row, second chair in, I, I remember it. And he thought he had full control of, he could do whatever he wanted to with that money.
See, I, I don't want. They, I mean, they, they, they love to save you, spend on their, they.
So, if she doesn't use them for things like this, because it's, it wasn't advertised or whatever. Oh, what can, moving into next year, what could she spend those funds on? If she got a bill for something, could she, what could she spend it on? Right, for permission.
To go to the state to ask to spend it.
And.
Um.
So like, if she wanted to buy a server.
Yes, and that'd be, that's.
That's a great way to spend that money, I guess.
You have computers.
Right. And she did say she might have to get.
The power. Yeah.
Just. I mean, that just.
I think so.
Well, we have, I mean, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand.
Have to move the. Social security, that's, that's repaying my value. Or, but. The, so, she's gonna ask us to move that into that account. Fifty-nine, I assume, six, fifty-nine. We need to advertise that money and, but part of this budget. Because, one, we're not collecting, our county general is so.
I.
Loved, well. She can't, you know, the state, health, or act rates, and it doesn't even close current county general. Um. And so we. Several years ago, we lowered it, because we were setting on so much money in the health, and we lowered the health rate. To, that part of county general. We had, we're not collecting. Well, they're collecting about a hundred thousand dollars in that. It's gonna be three hundred and thirty thousand a year of county money. Well, that ten dollars gonna be gone in five years, then you're gonna have to raise the tax levy on. The health department, and that means you're gonna have to lower your county general, because they're not gonna let you raise that, and you're gonna have county general. Could be digging in. Uh, spending more of your, uh, reserve, county's resource, because. I think of. Having to raise the, uh. Oh. But, your, you got development, we're at the. Top point, oh, three, we can't raise that anymore, and that's the highest, the bridge, the bridge of the ten tenths of.
Mm-hmm.
So, wow, so, you know. And you can only raise, what, is it about four percent this year?
Four percent.
Yeah, four percent, so we, and you know, our costs are about.
Our. A P E for next year. What was certified was one billion, three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and ten. Compared to one billion, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so.
So we'll have two hundred million on our assessed value, but then they're gonna make the state. Our tax rate go lower because.
The A P is higher.
The election can only be four percent. So. Um.
There's never a game.
I know, so, I mean, I.
They know the game.
Hmm.
And. Why that's all, I just wanted to say, um, back to you. You. I beat the election. And you are running the budget. Like you, like you do, and. You could have just shut down, you could have just said. Heck, what, and you did. And I respect you so much, but. You're finishing it out, you're doing it right. That's, that's the integrity of the justice, so. I mean.
I agree.
I mean, I've been not greedy all the time, no, but. Well, thanks to what I had thought about.
Say that again.
Your opinion. And there's some people in this.
In any position that. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Actually, now, I've been involved in politics a long time, I might. System works. To do what.
Some people.
To do.
Some people will take that. History. And experience that you have. In the political arena. And say that you dictate what happens in these meetings, and that's not the case.
So, I know, I, I did read that, that. But, uh. I, uh. Was, I'm leading the charge or something, and I had a couple followers. Um. You know what I'm talking about, but, you know. Um, okay, um. Yeah, we are, but we're still, um, just a journey until next Monday.
Recession.
Until, uh, I said, I've got a grandson due November the fifth. So I may or may not be here, mind you, I, I gotta push to get things done, so.
Okay.
You, you understand. Well, I think we, yeah, pretty much got, okay, we might have to just tweak some numbers, but we should be. Yeah, but if things work out, I'll be here, they, okay, I got, things I gotta take care of. Yeah, that's right.
I like the way you said that, you're gonna have a grandson, and you gotta push. I was like, I learn something new every day.
I'm not gonna call back. And, 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 and.